And now, let's return to the stage of the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion and join senior citizens from all over Los Angeles County enjoying the final dress rehearsal of Regalato by Giuseppe Verde.
Now, performances like this for the seniors today wouldn't be possible without the help of volunteers like yourselves. Tell me, what got you involved with Los Angeles Opera?
When I retired from work and I had friends that were volunteers here with the Opera League and they said, "Oh, you must come, you'll love it." And I can tell you, I have thoroughly enjoyed it. And I met some of the most wonderful people. Just, just a lot of fun. We do a lot of things for the Opera League here. We lead the cast. We work in the boutique shop. They have an educational department. Bringing the seniors and the students here is absolutely wonderful. We visit and talk with them, make them feel welcome. Then after we all do all that, we go get to even go to see the opera, which is great.
Oh, that's excellent. Now, I understand some of you actually go out to the senior centers and teach the seniors about the opera before performances like this.
Somebody does. Yeah, we're not involved in that aspect. There are so many departments and things, and the different ones do different things.
Now, Claire, how long have you been volunteering here?
Five years.
Five years. And you've loved every minute.
I love every minute of it. And I met some wonderful people. And, you know.
So you can recommend to seniors, or in fact, anybody that's got a few spare hours on their hands, to come along here to opera and volunteer?
Oh, yeah. We always need volunteers.
So they would just get in contact with the opera here? And I guess they have a whole department that deals with volunteers and helps. I'm sure you have to go through some training process as well?
Well, depend, yes, you do, for what you're going to, whatever particular area you're going to be working in, yes.
Excellent.
Just a great staff here. Wonderful staff here at the New York City.
Wonderful. Great. Thank you, ladies, so much. I know you're busy today, so thank you so much for spending a few minutes with us.
I had a wonderful day together. It was really fun, it was talking to the seniors here. They had a 103-year-old lady here that sees so many operas. She's gone, but she was a delightful one.
I know. People are so appreciative of this chance to come along. And we really appreciate what LA Opera does for the city's seniors. I'm here with Lillian Calamari. She's a program manager with SRO Housing, and she is with our senior program. Lillian, it's just so great to be here today. Is this the first time SRO Housing has had the chance to come to see your opera?
No, we come here whenever we can. I try to apply to get us in. Come about every other year, we're here.
Now, the seniors you work with generally are very low-income seniors. They have a whole number of challenges that they're facing on a day-to-day basis. Tell me, how important are programs like this for them?
It's very important to them. They love to come here. It's a nice venue for them to participate in. We show them films of the opera before they come. We give a presentation. They really get excited about coming here. They love coming to the opera.
Yeah, it's a very important task for them to see live performances that perhaps they couldn't really afford to come along, you know, in the general scheme of things.
That's right. And I wrote the van up here with the seniors, and one senior was talking excitedly about how he had gotten a video from a library and watched it before they came. And they just really get into it. And they get books in the library about it. We present them information and educate them about the opera, but...
So it's much more than just the afternoon itself?
Yes, they, they love to study it before they come. They're, they're very excited about venues like this. They also take them to the museums. They love the museums as well.
Yeah. There's a lot of great social opportunity for the seniors, really from all over the county of Los Angeles, to get together at events like this.
That's right.
How many seniors have you brought with you today?
We brought like 22 seniors with us today.
And is it just a case of applying for the tickets, or is there a little bit more to it than that?
Well, yeah, when they need to sign up, we need to sign them up. And again, we have to educate them on the opera. We want them to know what they're seeing. They, they love to learn about things. They love education, and this is another education opportunity for them, to, to learn something.
And I think especially with the cuts in education for us, and certainly in programs that seniors can participate in for educational opportunities. Opportunities like this are very rare, and we really need to support them as much as we can, because we want them to carry on for many years. And, you know, to have many seniors from all our senior centers coming along and getting this opportunity.
Lifelong education is very important for seniors. It keeps their minds active. It keeps them active. It keeps them interested in life. It's a very important thing.
Now, Lillian, I know you're also an art teacher.
Yes, I am.
I know, because we... Every year, we have our senior art exhibit at the City Hall in the Bridge Gallery there, and some of Lillian's participants at her classes, they enter their works in our manual exhibition.
Yes.
So also, tell us a little bit about that.
Well, it's an art workshop I started 18 years ago, when I first started working down on Skid Row. There were no programs. There were no art programs or education programs for the people. So I just went to one of the shelters and asked them if I could set up a little art workshop. And they said yes. And I did. So like four or five years, I was teaching in a shelter. And then the company I worked for, SRO Housing Corporation, they wanted me to move it to, to our property. And they gave me a loft for the artist to work in. It was very nice.
Yeah. And they're producing some amazing work, really multimedia work, amazing work. And it's really just so important, how important the arts are to seniors in their everyday lives.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's very important.
Thank you, Lillian. That was absolutely fantastic. For everyone here at Los Angeles Opera and for Aging Well in L.A., thank you for watching, and we'll see you next time.
Hello, I'm Ellen Chang. Today is Tuesday, May 3, 2011, and this is your budget hearing update. First, let's take a look at some highlights from Monday's Budget and Finance Committee's special hearing on the mayor's proposed 2011-2012 budget. On Monday, General Manager Laura Trejo of the Department of Aging told the committee that her department expects to see a 25% reduction in federal funding. No further budget reductions from the state of California, but a significant reduction from the city.
In terms of the mayor's proposed 2011 budget, it contains a reduction of 35% in allocation to the City General, the General City Purposes Fund that supports our Adult Day programs.
But Trejo says by changing the department's operational model and funding allocation methods, they are able to restore services to all 15 of the city's aging facilities. And turning to the head of Neighborhood Empowerment, which oversees the city's 93 neighborhood councils, General Manager Banhwan Kim reported to the Budget and Finance Committee changes its made since members of some neighborhood councils were accused of mishandling public funds.
We trained over 1,000 board members, and some of the substance of the trainings are how to conduct effective meetings, communication skills, how to use their public funds, and ethics training. I'm happy to report that over 70% of neighborhood council board members are now compliant with the state law. That was more than a 250% increase over the past two years.
The head of the Community Redevelopment Agency spoke to the committee about some possible good news, since its very existence was put in limbo after Governor Jerry Brown proposed the elimination of the state's community redevelopment agencies.
Of late, we are hearing more about reforming redevelopment. And in fact, Senator Wright has authored a bill which will be heard on May 4, on Wednesday, that is largely designed to address a number of the concerns that have come to light regarding redevelopment.
Essel says the bill, if adopted, would save the CRA from elimination, but would limit the scope and mission of the CRA, as well as refocus CRA on state-based priorities. As for today's budget hearing, it is less structured. The agenda for Tuesday says the committee has allotted time for committee members to give instructions to staff, to hear from any other city departments, as well as to hear comments from the public. But nothing formal has been scheduled. I'm Ellen Chang, and that's your budget hearing update.
Good, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 3, 2011. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I want to welcome members of the public who are here with us today, as well as our viewers on Channel 35, which broadcasts these meetings live throughout the city's cable system, and rebroadcast them each evening as well. There are three or four other ways of catching your council meeting in action, using your telephone by calling 213-621-CITY, through the internet at lacity.org, where we have live webcasts of these meetings, and we archive all of our past council meetings, as well as all the supporting material and agendas for these meetings. And finally, you can go either to Van Nuys or San Pedro, and through our remote facilities in those two locations, you can give testimony or just follow the city council meetings remotely from both of those places. If it's closer to where you live, then City Hall. So save yourself some time and some gasoline. With that, we do have right now six members of our 15-member body. We have two excuses on the desk today, so we do not expect Ms. Han or Mr. Krikorian. But otherwise, we are expecting the rest of the council. I want to thank council members Weezer, Coretts, Perry, Reyes, Smith, and Zine, who are here. That is seven members we're up to. The following members are late: council members Alakon, Cardness, Labange, Parks, Rosendahl, and Wesson. If you'll please make your way down as soon as possible, we can begin the meeting as soon as we have 10 members or two-thirds of our body constituting a quorum. In the meantime, our agendas are available here in council chambers. Those are posted 72 hours in advance throughout city buildings and online, 24 hours in advance for any of our special items. They are divided on the agenda. The items we are taking up are divided into items that have had public hearings and those which have not yet had public hearings. If you'd like to speak on any of the items, please fill out a speaker card. If it's already had a public hearing in committee, we require council action to reopen the council, the public hearing. Otherwise, for items that have not yet had a public hearing, those will automatically be triggered by a card from the public. So I just hand that to one of the sergeants-at-arms or city staff in our remote locations, and we'll be sure to hear your public testimony. There is a clock to help you guide your time in public comment, which is usually two minutes. We also have a section of the meeting for general public comment. That's for items not on the agenda, but nevertheless, under the city's jurisdiction, and that will be in the meeting as well. Thank you again to those council members who are here: council members Weezer, Coretts, Perry, Reyes, Smith, and Zine. Still awaiting council members Alakon, Cardness, Labange, Parks, Rosendahl, and Wesson. Thank for your patience while we wait those late council members, and we'll begin as soon as we have a quorum. As I mentioned before we went live, there is a bit of a traffic snare downtown, I think, with a bomb scare down the block. Authorities are taking care of that, but that may account for some of the folks who are a little tardy today. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. We have a quorum. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardness, Han, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, and Garcia. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Ms. Han moves, and Mr. Smith seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions.
All right, Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Alakon seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. Council members, it is Tuesday, and we do salute the flag at the beginning of the week through a pledge of allegiance. It has particular resonance this week, given the actions of our brave servicemen and our intelligence communities. If I could ask everybody's attention to just have a moment of silence as we remember those victims from 9/11. We remember those who have sacrificed their lives and paid the ultimate price in defending this nation and this world in the global war on terror. And following that, we will have a pledge of allegiance. But if I could ask everybody for a moment of silence, please. Thank you, and I ask you to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Please place your hand on your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. And if we can please now run through today's agenda. Madam Clerk, colleagues, if I can direct your attention to any items you wish to call special.
Item number one is an ordinance notice for public hearing.
Okay, do we have any cards on that?
No cards.
You have one card on item one, let's call that special. Next items, please.
Items two through eight are items for which public hearings have been held. There's requests to continue item eight to May 18.
Okay, without objection, continue item eight till the 18th. Okay. Any other... We'll call the commission appointment special as well. Mr. Weezer?
Six, please.
Two and six.
Okay. Number six as well for Mr. Weezer. Other specials, I'd like to call seven special myself. Seven? And I'll call that special with nine, 10, and 25. But we're not quite there for the other ones. But let's go ahead to the next items, please. Sorry, let's take up the balance. We do have 12 members, so let's go ahead and take up items three, four, and five. If nobody wishes to call those special, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, and those that have public hearings in committee, there's no move to reopen those. Go ahead for the next items, please, Madam Clerk.
Items nine through 25 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration. There's requests to continue item 11 to May 10.
If there's no objection to continuing that one till the 10th, item 11 will be continued. I'll call nine, 10, and 25 special. Are there specials? Mr. Parks?
Nine and 25, and they should be tied to...
Yep, I just called those special. We're going to tie 10, 25, nine, and seven altogether. We'll take them up together. Any other... Sorry, 19? What item, Mr. Smith? 19 for Mr. Smith? Or for Ms. Perry? And which one? 22 for Mr. Parks. Okay, and do we have cards on any of these items, please?
There's cards on items 16 and 21.
Okay, call those special for cards from the public. Close the other public hearings.
Excuse me, Mr. President. For item number 12, the recommendation number one should read "The Vacation of the Alley-Turn-Around Area, Easterly of Haskell Avenue and Northerly of Devonshire Street."
Okay, we'll make sure the record reflects that on item 12. Ms. Han? We now have the balance of items, that's items 12.
Can I have item three forthwith?
Yeah, we'll get to that in one second as soon as we vote on these. Items 12 through 15, 17 and 18, 20, 23 and 24. If we can take up the balance of those, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. If we can go to our commission appointment, and then we'll come back for a public comment. That'll be item number two. And if Mr. Ramos would like to come forward to the table? And we'll send three forthwith. Yep. And Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As the council member representing the Pueblo Commission, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Ramos, who is under consideration for the Pueblo Commission. He has an impressive background, having served as an attorney, now has his own firm as a real estate attorney. Grew up in Bull Heights, my neighborhood, and went on and shows with hard work and... And, you know, it's with your background, I'm sure you have good insight on the leases. So thank you very much for your service. And colleagues, ask for your aye vote on the appointment of Mr. Ramos to the Pueblo Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Alacon?
I was just wondering if you are committed to serving no matter what happens on item number six?
Yes, I'm committed to serving. The item six, that's going to happen after... I'm committed to serving.
I was wondering if we should hold this until we deal with item number six to make sure that he sticks with that commitment? Anyway, it's a good appointment, but good luck. It's a controversial situation, and it always has been. Since I've been on the council since 1993, it's very difficult. And so we appreciate the willingness to serve, and hopefully, we can continue to find cooperative remedies, even as we look at item number six.
Thank you very much, councilmembers.
Sir Labange, the chair of the committee.
Mr. Ramos, thank you. And Mr. Wezar, as the district councilman, I clearly spoke of you. You're from Roosevelt High School and you go to Stanford, Michigan. You're a great success. Your own right is coming from the community, and to put your own passion into that, to make it an experience that people will walk away from, to have a deeper feeling about Los Angeles and its great history. I know you have that skills and talent, so all members, I strongly recommend an aye vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Well, first, I want to thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
I knew you sat in committee, and we went through the discussion, and we did approve you, but I saw there was a lot of desire to participate. And I want to ask you, Mr. Ramos, if you could just share with us what our street means to you, El Pueblo, and what you'd like to leave behind when you see this experience concluding? If you don't mind just sharing some few thoughts with us.
Well, I'll start chronologically. Growing up here in Los Angeles, I remember going to Olvera Street quite frequently on weekends. Family would go across to Mass across the street, so we'd go to Olvera quite often. And so as a commissioner, I know that sense of history. And what I want to leave behind is just the best interest of the city, both the city as a landlord, making sure that the city acts as a responsible landlord, and at the same time preserving that historical aspect of Pueblo. So I want to find that balance and do a diligent work at it.
And that's key. I recall, because back in the 80s, if I recall correctly, there's a movement about where some entities, some interest groups wanted to build it up and put chain restaurants in there and just essentially obliterate the historic fabric of that very important place. Proposition age gets passed, and we're supposed to be moving in a direction where resources should be driven, as voted by the city stakeholders, to maintain that historic value, to maintain the integrity of that history, and to support the merchants. And so I think we're finally getting there. We're very, very close, but we need a commissioner like you who understands its role in our city's history and its presence in its architecture, in its culture, its song. And for that, I thank you and look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Thank you very much, Mr. Ramos, for putting yourself forward to serve regardless of the outcome of item number six. So with that, let's go ahead and make this official and take a vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations, our commissioner.
Thank you very much.
We'll now go to our general public comment. Our first speaker is Arnold Sacks. He'll be followed by Nakia Schaus.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. I'd like to bring home a point that you made reference to the events over the weekend, Mr. President, because in the budget discussions on Friday, it was brought home that with this action that took place over the weekend about the heightened threat to security, that the operations, security operations at LAX is not in tune or not in link-up with the security operations with LAPD. So I'm wondering, because there was a press conference yesterday, and both the county sheriff, Lee Baca, and the chief of police, Mr. Beck, mentioned be on the alert and that there'd be heightened security at LAX. But if there's not a link-up between the security command post at LAX and the security of LAPD, why isn't that being discussed? Just out of curiosity, especially brought on by the turn of events that occurred and the fact that the need for heightened security is now being called out. In a different vein, a couple of weeks ago, there was a, just to show you the wonderful partnership that AEG plans on with the city, there was a concert out in Riverside, a weekend concert. And if you might have read about it, they put up chain-linked fences all around the perimeter, double fences all around the perimeter for security. And that security was provided by an arm of AEG, which owns the rights to the Coachella Valley Concert Series. And the reason I bring that up is because they were willing to put out so much money for security there, but they couldn't pay a penny for the Michael Jackson security in the city valet.
Nakia Schaus is our next speaker. After that is Pat McCosker. Good morning.
Hello. Good morning, everybody. Nice to meet you. My name is Nakia Schaus. I'm a local 11 IBW member. I just finished a five-year apprenticeship with perfect attendance. As you can see, I'm a Bengals fan. I'm here to support the new stadium for a lot of reasons. It'll bring a lot of work to the community, and I don't have to go 2,000 miles to vote a team that's not here. You know, this is me last year. I'm not working right now, so I won't be able to make that trip. But if the stadium was here, you know, I pretty much would be there voting for the new team. And you have my word that if a team comes to LA, I'll be there. Like I said, I can't wait. I hope everything works out and it comes here. I'm sorry if I'm a little nervous. Never done this before. Like I said, it's helped me stay out of a lot of trouble for the past 10 years, and a new team here will help me stay out of trouble for another 10 years. So thank you, guys, for giving me some time. Have a great day.
Thank you. Pat McCosker is our next speaker, and Frank Lima.
Good morning, councilmembers. Pat McCosker, President of United Firefighters. We are here today about priorities. We think that the work that your firefighters and paramedics do in this city ought to be considered a higher priority. We noticed you had on your agenda but carried it over until after the budget discussion, an item to hire nine more civilians to double again the number of civilians you have investigating firefighters and paramedics in the city. You ought not do that. You shouldn't spend that $1.4 million annually on that while we're closing fire companies and ambulances in the city. You know, the same day this was discussed in committee, the mayor's budget came out, and it proposes making permanent the closure of 18 fire companies and four ambulances in targeted communities in Los Angeles, in places like Porter Ranch, and Silver Lake, and Wilmington, and El Sereno, and Century City. You're going to take away their fire company and ambulance and tell us to do more with less? But you can't tell civilian investigators to do more with less against us? You've been lied to about what the problem is regarding discipline on the fire department, and you're being lied to when they say, oh, and we get to reopen stuff because we'll put captains back in the field. They won't reopen one thing. We have constant minimum staffing. You're all smart enough to know that, and it doesn't reopen anything. You should take that $1.4 million and spend it where it matters by reducing what we have right now, the closures. You should take the eight or nine million dollars, $10 million perhaps, that I identified in that line item that was purposely left out of our budget yet put in the police department budget. Together, you've got some real money there. You're going to find more as you go through this budget, and we hope that we're a priority, that what we do is enough of a priority that we can reduce the brownouts that we have right now, in them as quickly as possible, save positions, not permanently eliminate them, because these guys deserve backup. When they go into a burning building, they deserve to have a company there behind them, and we're sick and tired of it.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. Our next speaker is Frank Lima. After that is John Walsh.
Yes, thank you. Frank Lima, Vice President, United Firefighters, Los Angeles City. Once again, priorities. I want this council to have public safety as a priority versus a non-emergency administrative operation such as internal affairs. Now, this union, we aren't against investigating our firefighters, okay? Internal affairs is a vital part of an organization this big, and so is discipline. We're not against that. But the commission, the fire commission and the LAFD created this internal affairs to what? To decrease the number of complaints every year, to decrease the number of border rights. But their argument's going to be, oh, from years of averaging 100 complaints a year with these firefighters, it's now up to 1,200 a year. These firefighters are the best in the world. They're the most professional when they're on scene. How did we go from 100 a year for years to over 1,200? It's a broken system, okay? They're going to say, we're overwhelmed. Our investigators are overwhelmed. Well, the border rights have gone from two in 2008 to 16 in 2010. Well, they're leaving out the fact that our members that are getting disciplined for two-day suspensions are appealing their rights to a border rights. These aren't big offenses. They're leaving out the facts that... What about the litigation that's gone on in this horseshoe here that everybody knows about? The payouts to the fire department? Well, I'll tell you what, over 90% of them have zero to do with the rank-and-file members. It has to do with management's mishandling of investigations, doing politic moves, and you all know it. Where's the leadership? Why do they solicit anonymous complaints? Where's the leadership at? You could simply... The days of counseling one of our members where a union representative is not even required, where have those days gone? The leadership on the fire department lacks, and put ambulances, truck companies, and engine companies back to protect the citizens and our members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lima. Thank you to all the members who are here today as well. John Walsh is our next speaker. After Mr. Walsh is Don Garza.
No cuts. These are the bravest people in the city of Los Angeles. No cuts. Anonymous charges against them, no cuts. Too many investigations. HollywoodHighlands.org, 100,000 successful server requests a month. We just put up a new post. The End of the World coming up May 21st. I hope you've all heard about The End of the World, HollywoodHighlands.org. We had a great remembrance of the Holocaust. Very poor showing by city council. Labange, Parks, Perry, that's all. Mr. Parks was there for the entire meeting. The mayor shows up. This is what he does. He shows up, he speaks, and then he walks out during the kaddish. The kaddish is the prayer for the dead. He just walks out in front of everyone, showing his contempt for all Jews. And he's with his little smirk and his little story about how his son was crying. Lies, lies. And Antonio Press releases, where was he last week? He was in Chicago with Rahm Emanuel. What were they doing? They were raising money for a Republican congressman, Congressman Micah of Florida, who has the Transportation Commission. He's the chairman. JMB Realty of Chicago, Loop Financial of Chicago, are having their arms twisted by the two mayors, Democratic mayors, to put money into Micah's campaign and his friends. And why are they doing this? Because JMB of Chicago owns Century City, and they want a station. They want a station which will add a subway station. It's corrupt. You're all corrupt, and from now on, the name of the council president is Aska Garcetti, for the shame he brought on Aska. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Don Garza. After that, I'm sorry, before that, Mr. Corretts wanted to say something briefly. Mr. Labange?
Just for the record, despite what was just said by Mr. Walsh, I was also present, sitting on the front row of the stage visibly from the first to the last minute, so I don't know why he claimed I wasn't there.
Mr. Labange?
I just wanted to say our mayor represented the city well, and we should never forget the whores of Nazi Germany and every day, never forget. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Garza is our next speaker. After that is Dr. Clyde Williams.
Good morning, city council. Don Garza from Historic Core Downtown Los Angeles. I had no idea that the firefighter union was going to be here today. God bless them. God bless all their work. We love you. I'm from all over the city of Los Angeles, and we will speak on your behalf, those of us that know the truth, that we watch you work day in and day out and in danger. But it's amazing. I had no idea this was going on, and I just came. I wanted to brag about my certificate of completion with the Community Emergency Response Team. And I want to give credit to where credit is due. I want to give it to myself. I want to give it to firefighter Howard. I want to give it to the fire department for continuing to have fought. I didn't know that they had to actually fight to keep this Community Emergency Response Team going. Now that I know that you want to get rid of the professionals you want to put us, I don't know what's going on here. But also, as a habit, I have to give credit where credit is due. I wish I could show you my medical records where I was very, very ill and living in Skid Row and not doing very well. And yeah, Jan Perry is Jan Perry, but I have to give credit where credit is due. Those of us that are living in Skid Row, those of us that used to live in Skid Row, are getting stronger and stronger and stronger and stronger every day, where we were, at one time, we were a burden. We are now becoming productive citizens of the city of Los Angeles and this country. This right here proves it. I can deadlift 385 pounds, squat 260 pounds, climb a rope. Thank you, Ms. Perry, for having faith in all of us, all of you guys that put up with me. But today, I want to thank Janice Han. The other day, it was a very important day, and I came in, and I did not know that I was exposed. And I think you were trying to tell me. I'm not sure. And other people didn't want you, so thank you very much for... Yeah, it was... She tried.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker. After that is Arminak Norrigenian.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, also a member of the LA 32 Neighborhood Council. We meet tomorrow night. Basic problem: A lot of our people don't know what this means. And after last year's fiasco, the fire department tried to sort it out, and they tried to sort it out. And I received one fire notice for one of my lots, but not for the second one. They're adjacent lots. They're actually almost tied. So what's happening? I don't know. It seems that all of the changes that were made and commemorated today over in the fire commissioners' meeting are not working. Why did the Sunland to Hunger fire occur yesterday? Isn't there some problems with fire clearance? We are now becoming productive citizens of the city of Los Angeles and this country. This right here proves it. I can deadlift 385 pounds, squat 260 pounds, climb a rope. Thank you, Ms. Perry, for having faith in all of us, all of you guys that put up with me. But today, I want to thank Janice Hahn. The other day, it was a very important day, and I came in and I did not know that I was exposed, and I think you were trying to tell me, I'm not sure, and other people didn't want you, so thank you very much for... Yeah, it was, she tried.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker. After that is Arminak Norjaniyan.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, also a member of the LA 32 Neighborhood Council. We meet tomorrow night. Basic problem, a lot of our people don't know what this means. And after last year's fiasco, the fire department tried to sort it out, and they tried to sort it out, and I received one fire notice for one of my lots, but not for the second one. They're adjacent lots. They're actually almost tied. So, what's happening? I don't know. It seems that all of the changes that were made and commemorated today over in the Fire Commissioners' meeting are not working. Why did the Sunland to Hunger fire occur yesterday? Isn't there some problems with fire clearance of the brush? There's no enforcement. You can charge $13 last year, $23 or $26 this year, but there's still a basic element. We're not getting our money's worth. Last year, it was five minutes of review by an inspector. This year, it could be as much as 10 minutes of review of over 100,000 lots in the city of Los Angeles. Make it real. We have the most stringent fire requirements for brush lands in the United States, but we don't enforce it. We don't fund it so that it can be enforced effectively, and so that we cannot remove our fire engines from the structure areas and put them close by the hillside, wealthy, forested areas. Just simple prevention is always better than trying to suppress a fire like they did yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Arminak Norjaniyan is next, then we'll go to Van Nuys, and we'll hear from Donna Perman. Good morning.
Good morning. Representative sitting council members, dear fellow Angelinos, my name is Arminak Norjaniyan, and I am actually Texas-Pent liberal. As a liberal Democrat and human rights advocate, I announce my candidacy to run for the seat of the Trump political campaign, to win the seat of a member of California State Assembly this year. I also need a support, tangible support, among Californian patriots and union members in order for me, you know, to raise funds. So call my cell number, 323-445-1600, or write to my email address, freeliberalatoflink.net with your tangible support. As a Texas-Pent liberal, I propose raising taxes against welfare, tax avoidance against welfare homeowners and rich corporations like gasoline-selling corporations, about 50% in order for the state, you know, to raise revenues, in order to expedite spend, to increase spending. Actually, I demand expedited issuance of Section 8 housing watches to work in poor California within six months or less, so we could buy the real estate and pay rent of a Section 8 program. As a also liberal Democrat, I fight against wasteful spending and corruption. Actually, in terms of being Angelino, I always run towards potholes at the intersection of Jefferson Boulevard and Catalina Street, and I called the Department of Transportation three times over the last month, and we never fixed what potholes. And I demand I stand with the head of transportation, Mr. R.D.D., and I demand recall of council member Bernard Parks, and I swear I will file notice to recall this October, when it become legal to recall council member Bernard Parks. And also, tell that your city attorney won't help you, when federal attorney will indict you for embezzling funds to Wilshire Grand Hotel. Los Angeles City doesn't own Wilshire Grand Hotel, so it's illegal to give any funds to Wilshire Grand Hotel.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker is Donna Perman. She's in Van Nuys. After that, we'll come back, and Richard Robinson will speak next in chambers. Good morning, Donna.
Good morning. Yeah, I like, I'm not sure if you're going to do nine, so I want everybody to vote yes on the health care. Anyway, I wanted to go, what I want to talk about is the DWP. How come the DWP is considered special, that DWP doesn't have to go along with the rest of the city coalition? They never had to give up a raise. They continued getting the raise all along. Matter of fact, now they're 40% more than other city coalition members, and that's not right. They should stop all their, stop their benefits and let them pay more, just like everyone else is having to pay. I mean, it hits the whole city, it would hit the DWP too. They should be giving some money toward the utility, and it will help the ratepayers. And if they pay more, then maybe the ratepayers' utilities will go down, because then we won't be overspending on the DWP. And we need to stop also, I want to know exactly what the city council, what are you paying in your health care? Are you paying a portion of your health care? And if it is, it would be going by the portion of your income. We need to stop giving the city council all the little freebies, all their free cars, their free cash, and we should cut your paychecks in half, because all you seem to want to do is find ways of revenue off the backs of somebody else, which I don't think is right. And then you also pay too much to the CRA. We still, it's never gonna end. We have to go after the CRA. They are taking billions of dollars.
You don't understand, we have to pay more. It is costing the city.
Oh, I mean, we'll have to pay more toward health care, but not to pay for the CRA, is what I meant to say. We are gonna have to pay for the health care. It's gonna go for the payroll.
Thank you. Richard Robinson's our next speaker, and then we'll come back to Van Nuys for Miriam Fogler. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. Mr. President, members. President Obama's brilliant tactic of firing Robert Gates and placing Ambassador Crocker into Afghanistan and Lieutenant General John Allen strengthens the counterinsurgency movement. There's a legitimate leadership on the ground in Afghanistan, which will hasten the drawdown in Afghanistan. Kudos to President Obama. Panetta's move, along with, I met Mr. Panetta when he was in Washington, DC, in the Congress. Also, taking Petraeus out of Afghanistan with his, he wrote the book on counterinsurgency. Placing him in a more strategic position proves President Obama's ability as commander-in-chief. However, there's a danger that the enthusiasm can lead to destabilizing our allies' countries. Thank you.
Thank you. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker for public comment in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Yes, good morning. I want to let you know that I want the constituents to hear. Arnold Sacks, your constituents, okay? You say, "What about the constituents, Arnold Sacks?" Well, the city family is not something that, you know, you call your friends of the city.
If you'll please address your comments to the councilmen.
Okay, what I'm saying is that we need to vote for this health care thing, because the constituents are out there that don't vote. We have to make, we have to pay the 4% contribution to the health care folks, okay? Because the city is having trouble. There are people out there that don't care about the city. So we have to take the load, and we have to realize that we're gonna have to take it back, and we're gonna have to vote this up, vote for this health care. You must vote for it. It's for yourself, and you're gonna be a winner. You're gonna be a winner, winner, winner. If you voted down, guess who's gonna win? Politicians, because they're gonna use the savings for other things. At least the money will go into payroll and help the cost in the city for your department. So please vote for the health care. It's a yes, yes on this revote, an absolute yes. So don't go against yourselves, don't go against your work, because it's for your own selves, and never mind what the politicians do down here, because they're all messed up anyway. And it's the constituents after all are the problem, who don't go out and vote. That's the problem, though, folks, and they're the ones that are creating the problem that 911 operators may go on furlough, because constituents don't bother to vote the people that should be here at City Hall, and clear out City Hall.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, sorry, I can't quite read their last name, Terry, is it Wilburg? My apologies, sir. If you'd just state it for the record.
Yes, my name is Terry Wilber, and I'm also a city attorney, which you know from the city attorney council, who said they tired of our own here playing games. Now, in the direction of the fire department, the fire department I work with, and we do discover people's bodies, and we do bring them back alive, and you should know, Senate Council, he was there, and in doing so, since you have all the different variety of people, the television that you just passed belongs to me, it was stolen. The radio station in Africa from London, it was stolen, plus duplicated with Washington and others. I do appreciate all those papers be back, even in the President's House. These written papers and business papers on Central, I mean, Wilshire, had, they're stolen. I like my papers back. Mrs. Perry, you know what I'm talking about, even because you asked me about Roma Linda. It belongs to me and Kathy, not Bird and you, or the people. Second of all, I do not appreciate the council just overlooking facts of duplication, because that's a flaw within itself. You may listen to me, you may not, but look, all the certificates that I have, the schooling I have, why do you have it? Thank you.
Thank you. Walter Beckheller is our next speaker.
Good morning, and I just want to congratulate whoever was involved with catching bird brain. And I just want to say a couple of comments I wanted to make last week about, somebody said Mr. Barack Obama wasn't born in America. I don't think that that has anything to do with the situation. The problem is whether or not, why hasn't the Republican Party here or anywhere else in the country commented on some things that Mr. Barack Obama said? I think it's really a contrivance that Mr. Obama caught Mr. Osama. I mean, the whole thing is really like fake, as far as I can see. We've known this guy was gonna be the president ever since Starvin Marvin left Marklar in 2001. And the problem isn't whether or not we need to find somebody who knows how to speak properly in public. The problem is the need that our country still has to have free elections. It's not supposed to be a top-secret operation. It's still supposed to be free elections under any circumstance. So I want to say that that was a poor move by our country to fudge the situation and put this guy into office the way they did. They changed the voting laws two weeks before each primary, you can register to vote. Well, gee, in the back east, everybody's got two homes. They got a wear home and a sever home, and to register to vote in each one, that's what the historians are gonna blame it on? No, they're gonna say that whoever this Harvard group is thinks they're gonna take over and run the whole country, and it's not working well financially, and it's still not gonna pan out in the end. I disagree with you.
Thank you. That'll complete public comment for today. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. If we could take up items seven, 10, 25 out of order, then we have item 19, item 19 that's also been requested out of order, but if we could take those first, and just let me frame them, I know we have some cards, but I think even the members of the public and the council would probably want to react to the report that's gonna be, the reports that will be before us. Colleagues, it's true that these economic times have forced us to make some very tough choices, these unprecedented fiscal straits. We've had to make choices that have real impacts on our communities here in Los Angeles. But to ensure that we continue with a public trust, make sure people understand there are no quick fixes, we also must make sure that there's no money that we are leaving on the table that could be used to avoid cuts. I led the creation of the Commission on Revenue Efficiency, joining with many voices in here that had said, "What can we do to make sure that we are maximizing the revenue that is out there?" Joining with departments and individuals from the public who have been working in this area and calling for this for a long time, because it was unacceptable simply for our lack of streamlining, our bureaucracies, our inefficiencies, to stand in the way of the people of Los Angeles getting the money that is owed to them and to clear away the red tape in doing so. I very much believe in accountability. I believe the city needs a point person to make sure that money owed to the people of Los Angeles is indeed paid. We need an executive with responsibility for and a sole focus on collections. Uncollected money is money that could support police, fire, traffic, library, and other critical services. We heard from our firefighters today about closures. These are the sorts of things that are threatened under the current fiscal crisis. But when we have SCOFF laws that we know that aren't paying their full way, when we make it difficult for people sometimes to pay their permit fees and other things, this is money that we essentially are saying, "We will accept moving away from the city of Los Angeles, and instead, we will cut services," and that is simply unacceptable. It's time to replace past due with paid. We need to clear away the bad debt from our books and collect the rest as soon as possible. And along those lines, we've asked, there's a number of items that are here before us today, items seven, 10, and 25. But we'd like to invite the president, or the chair and vice chair of the CORE Commission, Ron Galperin, and Councilwoman Cindy Misakowski to come to the table to briefly present some of the items that we have before us. Mr. Parks is doing a great job of folding this into our budget hearings as well. And for all general managers, we are looking to you. It is as important that you come to us in these budget hearings and tell us what you want from us, what you want to protect from us, but it is equally important that you tell us how you are maximizing your revenue collection. We've seen some great strides made by a number of departments, but not enough by too many. And we will judge your performance, ultimately hold the accountability and the feet of fire of the general managers for implementing much of what CORE has called for, and this has really been an extraordinary collection of people and of recommendations. And so with that, I'll hand it over for presentation, and we can open up to a discussion and council and public comment.
Good morning, council president and members of the council. I'm Ron Galperin, here as chair of the Commission on Revenue Efficiency, honored also to be joined by our vice chair and, of course, former council member Cindy Misakowski. Good morning to all. Wanted to just take a few moments to share with you what the commission has done since we were created, what we have found in terms of money that has been left on the table when it comes to collections, a few highlights of our recommendations, as well as what we see as opportunities moving forward. As our council president said, LA's residents and businesses really deserve a city that works, and the taxpayers deserve to get their money's worth, and we have to stop leaving tens and hundreds of millions of dollars that go uncollected and continue to be uncollected. The commission was created in the spring of 2010 by our council president, the ad hoc commission, and we were asked to evaluate and recommend improvements in collections, billings, and new revenues. Were comprised of seven volunteer commissioners, myself and our vice chair, Ms. Akowski, but also including five others, and one of them will be joining us hopefully in a few moments. They include Commissioner Michael Gagin and David Farrar. They include Cheryl Parisi, and they also include...
Brandon and Mark.
Oh, Brandon, thank you. Brandon Shamim and Mark, thank you. So, we see that efficiency has to be a priority, and of course, everybody talks about this all the time here. We've met biweekly from October to May of 2011 to create our blueprint on reform of city collections, and that includes 65 very specific recommendations. Now, we found a staggering 76% of about $540 million in non-tax receivables are more than 120 days past due, about 42.5% more than two years past due, but let's be frank, understood this money is not collectible. It's really phantom debt at this point. We can, however, change our system in the future to make sure we never have this happen again. Less than half of city departments are still applying interest and penalties on past due accounts. This despite the fact that there have been mayoral directives... This despite the fact that there have been mayoral directives that specifically stated that that was to happen. Even modest improvements, however, in, for example, fire department and transportation collections will make a big difference and yield tens of millions of dollars a year. We've got to clean off our ledgers of the phantom debt, and we have to really take some more steps in terms of centralizing billing and collections. The Office of Finance is going to be addressing that in the next couple of minutes, as I understand, and they've actually worked very hard in coming up with a matrix and a plan. And moreover, the tally of uncollectibles that we found does not include uncollected taxes, intergovernmental dollars, unbilled services, et cetera. Number one, we are recommending an inspector general, and our vice chair will be talking about that. More centralized and clear authority. Accountability, because if you don't have that, you have nothing. It's about holding departments accountable, it's about providing both a carrot and a stick and ensuring compliance. Intensified consequences for delinquencies, enhancing the quality and availability of information, because so much of what we have on our books is not real, and we need to clean that up, as we have said. Creating a system in which we really systematically and with a sense of urgency, collect money, and we make it a priority, and it is inculcated as a value in every department and in every employee in the city of Los Angeles that we need to bring in money. And we've got a number of specifics about fire department, about transportation, as well as coming up a report on parking occupancy tax, which has also been taken up by the council recently, in which tens of millions of dollars are being left on the table every single year. Wanted to thank the commissioners that I have been working with, as well, of course, as all of those who were the appointing authorities for our commissioners, including the mayor, the controller, the chairs of audits and governmental efficiency and budget and finance, also to congratulate the new chair of audits and governmental efficiency, Dennis Ein, and also to thank our director of finance, Antoinette Kristofal, a very fine staff that she has, our CAO, city attorney who also was of great assistance, and budget advocates and a number of others. A couple of quick opportunities for bringing money in, because in the final analysis, all these reforms are fine and nice, but it's all about the dollars. Parking occupancy tax, we believe that in the coming fiscal year, if we make a number of reforms, we could see fifteen million dollars additional revenues, perhaps twenty-five to thirty in upcoming years. Documentary transfer tax and other kinds of intergovernmental transfers, actually, documentary transfer tax has been sort of a personal obsession of mine for quite a while, and going after those transactions in real estate that are unrecorded but have transfers. We've already seen close to a million dollars, actually, in the past year from this, I'm very proud to say, but we can see several million more. We've got a couple of million more from parking citations. I think we can see a little bit from the sale of our aging receivables, get them off the books, not a lot of money, but perhaps less than a million, but at least something. We can go into the details of this, but I'm now going to turn it over to our vice chair with thank you very much to all of the council members for giving us this opportunity to be of service to the city.
Thank you, Ron, good morning. Members, one of the things that was interesting about this commission was that it was appointed by not only the president's city council, the controller, the mayor, and others. So it really created a collaborative effort in terms of its appointing authority. And I think what was recognized, if you remember, this was appointed after the controller issued yet another report about how much debt the council, the city, leaves on the table. And what was striking about that report is we've heard it before. This controller has issued such a report, the former controller has issued such a report, the former mayors have received such a report, and it really was and is a broken record. And although there have been strides, and there was a Mercedes report issued and commissioned some time ago, there are always a group of recommendations, and generally, a group of recommendations that don't get, although they get adopted, they don't get truly enforced. And so what I thought, and I think the commission members thought too, was lacking, is someone who has that singular focus in this city for a singular point in time, we have created, we've recommended the creation of this inspector general, but it can be called anything else. What I liked about inspector general is, à la the police department, it did not only focus on what needed to get done, it changed the culture of what needed to get done. And the police department, I think today, we would all agree, is a far, far better institution because of a singular focus. It was the consent decree, the inspector general, but a really important emphasis on we need to change things. We had said it before, it didn't get done until we created that position. Similarly here, this is not saying that those who are responsible don't do their job well, but the collection responsibility not only falls to the Office of Finance, it falls to every general manager, it falls to the mayor to enforce it with the general managers, it falls to the council in terms of following up on everything. And it's just one of a multitude of things that each of those agencies does. There's no one entity that is singularly and solely responsible to make sure that everybody else does their job. And that's what this post does, we think it can create some changes. You know, it's funny, I see Ms. Han looking. I was at this council when we had the issue of the Los Angeles Police Department false alarms, and one of the problems with false alarms was the billing. Not only were they a drag on the department, but they were a drag on not getting the money that was responsible. We created a system, we created the responsibility with the police commissioner, executive director, we put money into a system to, of technology, to get that done, and today, they are recovering hugely on their false alarm bills, and as a consequence, false alarm calls are going down. So it shows that with focus, with intent, with purpose, you can accomplish something. And again, this is not meant to be just another civil service or another position that stays around forever and just divides responsibility. This is, at best, a two-year position to get the job done and change the culture. It's in big order, but I think it can be done if that's the sole responsibility on this person's plate. Now, I understand there's some discussion as to where this should be, should it be in the mayor's office, should it be at an independent position, what authority and how should that authority be executed? But I really think those are less relevant than the commitment of this city with the CAO, with the mayor, and with the council, to say, "Get it in", and with the controller and the Office of Finance. This is something that can be coordinated, and I think can be done, and each general manager can look better as a result of the work that this person will help provide in terms of the assistance to help them get their job done, get the money collected, and I think that will not only generate more jobs that they can save, but helping them to do their jobs in some of the other arenas that those general managers have to perform as well. So I think it makes a lot of sense, and, you know, my biggest hope is that were this to be created, two years hence, we would see a report from the controller, or three years hence, saying, "There's been a change, there's been a turnaround, these systems have been implemented, the department heads now know how they're supposed to do it, they're getting it done, and we don't need to worry about poor collections anymore because we've accomplished that mission." That's what I think this position is. The really, the only difference between this report and every other report we've seen year after year after year on how are we going to do a better job, is to give this singular responsibility to a singular person to help institute that change.
Mr. Garcetti?
Yeah, just briefly to conclude, thank you both, and really, you've done extraordinary work, and Ron, thank you for being the leader of this. Made no secret that I think you would be a great implementer of this stuff as well, but there's all sorts of issues we've explored around that, but nevertheless, the entire commission and everybody who has just done such a dedicated job. The one thing, colleagues, that I hope you do hear loud and clear from this, and again, it is not a reflection on anybody engaged and involved in this, but it does need to be one empowered person in the city, whether we call them an inspector general, whether we call them a collection sheriff, is less important, where they are is less important, it's just that we have the commitment behind, that they can go work with our general managers, work with our systems out there, and make this easy in the full spectrum, because certain departments take care of certain aspects of this, but we need one person who ultimately can make this see change. We'll be looking, I think, at a city that's able to restore some of our most critical services based on work that can be done right away. We saw that happen already, for instance, with our parking meters, when we got better technology, when we implemented some of those systems here, we saw those dollars begin to go up and help balance the budget and save cuts that we would have otherwise have to make. Think about that tenfold, think about that in a lot of different departments and a lot of different areas. So number ten, what I would recommend, instead of saying back to committee, we keep it here, because there's a number of different manifestations for which we could have this person be in place, so to keep all those options open right now, I'd say, why don't we continue it here for the time being? We'll explore a couple of the people that would be good for this position, whether we want to go straight out to a huge RFQ or whether we can do that in-house. The most important thing, I think, is to have somebody good and to have them there soon. We talked in a press conference about having them at the end of the calendar year last year. Now, we didn't know some of the legal issues that would come up and everything, but we need this in place by at least, I believe, the beginning of the fiscal year, and the best way to do that, I believe, is by keeping that here. So I'd ask to continue that for at least two weeks right here in council, and in the meantime, move forward on seven and twenty-five with those reports back.
Mr. Labonge.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, we have another report, Office of Finance was going to come up as well.
Mr. Garcetti, excuse me, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Garcetti, what was that?
Office of Finance was also going to give the report as part of this as well, that's one of the items, so.
We want to hear from the colleagues and then hear that?
Up to you, Mr. Garcetti.
Okay, Mr. Labonge, and then, Mr. Reyes.
Cindy, I'm just thinking, you're in charge, you're the mayor of Los Angeles, what would you do? Would you actually want to create a position, or do you have a deputy mayor in charge of this, or would you have a, ask the controller to have a person who's another person? I mean, I see, here's the thing that I know. I know that one time, if we have a problem, what we do is we create someone to solve it. Many of our departments, and I know these other municipalities who are going through the budget process, and I'm not on the committee, but I'm listening, cities have nineteen, twenty-four different departments, eleven, some cities, we have forty-four, now reduced, I think to thirty-eight. Many departments that we spawned in our lifetime, in our roles, have been because of a problem. So this is another position because there's a problem. Is there something we can identify to say, "You're in charge, you're here now, you given the backing to be able to do that"? Your vast experience.
Right now, the responsibility for the collection of these bills falls on a number of different people, including a number of different general managers. For instance, the Department of Transportation is responsible for the parking revenue, but we all know that the general manager of Department of Transportation has a whole lot of issues on his or her plate. Similarly, every time a general manager is responsible in the fire department for the collection of the ambulance billing, the fire department chief has a lot of other things to do. Not that he shouldn't be doing this, but it's always going to get only as much attention as everything else gets in a fair juggling of high-level responsibilities. This position, the Office of Finance does report to and about how each of the general managers is doing, but sometimes that report has been less than forthcoming, it gets muddled in terms of, you know, are you going to say something about one general manager if in fact that general manager is doing a good job and everything else? So you really need, and it's hard for a peer general manager to report on other general managers. This position, whether in the CAO's office or the mayor's office, given the big step to help and do and provide for the general managers what they need, and the understanding of how they need to do it and how and why this is important to them, part of our report has said, should there be an incentive? Should a general manager who does an excellent job in bringing in revenue get some of that back into their own department? This is a position, as I said, if you look in the police department, we gave this special position on the...
Right, to the commission, now it says also the commission.
To the commission, should they also, with the inspector general...
So there used to be a petroleum coordinator for the city in the CAO's office. Should it be in the CAO's office with just focus? Remember when the only one person who counted on the budget, who walked through the door, was Anton Kalea? You know, now it's, you know, so I'm just saying, if we could identify someone who's existing, then it reduces the overhead of what we have to do.
I agree, and, but it can, it might be someone who exists in one or another areas, but they've got, they can't have this on their plate with everything else.
Got it.
It's got to be a position where this singularly is the only thing that this person does with the authority backing it by both the mayor and the council, that this person, when this person speaks to a department manager, has authority.
I got it. The CAO's office, would that be an appropriate spot?
I believe it would be between the CAO and the mayor, and I, I'm not sure which one is better.
Which one, very good.
We also used to have, if you remember, a petroleum administrator, which was the CAO also, who solely handled oil drilling.
Petroleum, right. Which, what was his name?
Doug Truitt.
Doug Truitt, very good. Cindy, you know everything, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Reyes.
I know this action initiates several report backs, correct?
Yes.
In National League of Cities, I come across different approaches, you get different companies, entities, private in nature, that will deliver a pitch that says, "Our company specializes in collections of this, collections of that". There's a whole range of entities out there because of the complications, quite frankly, of how operations are implemented and the nuances of how you collect money. I'm assuming the report back, because we're such a large city, our departments cover thousands and thousands of transactions, are we speaking to one entity that can look at a range of operations, or are we just trying to understand what type of infrastructure we should consider, given the complexity of the problem? What are we anticipating?
Actually, both. I think you're talking about the issue of the collection agencies, where after an immediate bill having been sent out by a department, if there's not a response, how do we follow up on it quickly? Because I think everyone knows in the whole realm of collections, the faster you can get somebody responsibly knowing that what they have to do, the higher likelihood you're going to get a return. But there are those where it doesn't pay for a city employee or a city department to go and become a collection agent after a period of time. The problem that the city has had in the past is we don't know about those that are lingering, 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 until so far out that by the time you might send it to a collection agency, it's harder to get anything. So part of our report is not, is to do a faster turnaround on those that we can, but get those that we can't out to an entity that can do a better job than we can. So that is, is part of our recommendation. We have met with those kind of collection agents who do it for court fines, who do it for everybody else in the broader community, and that is also part of our report. But the biggest problem internally is we have been so lax and lagging in time to even get those bills back to somebody who can make a decision to give them to a collection agency, that we're losing the collectibility of those accounts. So, as I said, we're not expecting that all of the city's agents all of a sudden become, you know, real collection agencies, but we have to know better and faster how to get into their hands the kind of bills that they can do a better job of collecting than we can.
Right, it's been my experience in these ten years as a councilman, ten years as a staff person, that if we don't have an ordinance in place, we don't have a policy that's very specific, then it's hard to drive a department head or a general manager to cooperate because of the territorialism that exists within the functions of our departments. So we look at potential for collection, all potential for policy change. I don't see them, I haven't seen in twenty years where there's been that graciousness to say, "Well, maybe you could do that for me, maybe I should lose my discretion because you're going to gain access to that resource." So wouldn't, shouldn't we have a policy level directive to be just placed in the CAO or the mayor's office? The policy side of this, the lack of ordinance, I just don't see them gracefully coming to the table and saying, "We want to cooperate". I bet you really see that except in moments of crisis.
Can I move the microphone closer to you so we can hear you better?
Fortunately or unfortunately, there are executive directives and there are ordinances which tell department heads how they should handle this. The problem is, no one oversees the enforcement of those ordinances or policies or executive directives. That's the problem.
Enforcement.
It exists today, and that's what we're thinking, that this position, because as I said, an executive, a general manager has a lot of executive directives that they operate under, a lot of policies exist in the city, and the question is, there's always a juggling of which one comes to the floor and are you paying attention to? This position would cause people singularly to pay attention to those things, because this would be the only thing on this person's place to drive that, those policies, to drive those executive directors that are out there to yield the results, to yield the cooperation, and most importantly, the result of the money that is out there that is due to be collected, being collected.
Well, I'm hoping that as we go through this process, we avoid points of tension that we had when the discretion of water power with the budget and back and forth and all that drama, and reconstructions, we can avoid that type of scenario. It would be one of my end goals as we go through this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Alacan. Mr. Alarcon.
I haven't had a chance to look at the report directly, but one of the concerns I have is that we always talk about the receivables in the most grandiose context, in that we assume, there seems to be this public perception and assumption that we should collect 100% of everything that we believe is owed to us. But any, in any collection system, they never get 100%. It's extremely rare. And then our collections are so diverse that some categories, our percentage of collection is much higher than other categories. And we can't seem to get a real picture as to what we should be targeting in terms of collection. So when we do our budgeting process, we may say there's X amount in accounts receivable, but in fact, there might be 50% of that, in reality, that is actually achievable. So what, does your report get into any of that kind of analysis? Does it give us any specific targets so that we can look at traffic citations one way and look at, look at parking, you know, public, private parking company collections differently? How do, how can we get a real figure? And by the way, I want to say this publicly, in a season of elections, it just provides fodder to candidates to harp on this whole issue of collections in a very unrealistic way, and really, I believe, causing us to focus improperly on the total amount as opposed to the realistic amount. And I don't want that campaign, what compels people during campaigns to do that, I don't want that to be driving the discussion here. We need to, we need to create a realistic picture. And also, for the same reasons Mr. Reyes said, because we have so diverse people, the diversity of people that we have to work with requires us to more surgically work with the general managers to design a program that's effective for them in particular and their program. Anyway, I'd just like to get your feedback on all of those issues.
Councilman, I'm so glad that you brought that up. And first of all, I just wanted to also introduce my fellow commissioner, Michael Gagan, who just joined us. You are absolutely correct that there are a lot of phantom numbers out there, and that it's time that we have some real clarity and some real truth-telling as far as that's concerned. Take DOT as an example. The numbers show that we're only collecting about 50% of the dollars. But here are the realities. The realities are that actually about 80% of the parking tickets do get paid. Another 5% are resolved in one way or another or dismissed. But that 15% that does not get paid balloons into something akin to 50% of the dollars because of late fees, penalties, interest, et cetera. And a lot of that is not collectible. Now, we're not going to be able to go from 80% to 100% in terms of collections. But if we can even increase incrementally by 2% to 3%, that's going to make a difference in terms of tens of millions of dollars over time. Another example being a fire department. And again, there have been reports about the numbers of 50% or so that are collected. But we have to remember that, first of all, there are a lot of folks in Los Angeles who simply do not have the means to pay. The higher your ambulance rate is, the lower your percentage of collection is going to be. And we receive a lot of monies from Medicare and from Medi-Cal, in which case, we can't even legally go after the individual in many cases for that difference, and yet it's still sitting on that books. We've got to clean that up. Having said that, if we stop talking about these diversions of these sometimes crazy numbers, then we can start looking at, where's 5 million here, and 10 million here, and 20 million there, and 2 million? And then that adds up to some real money. And also, just in terms of Councilman Reyes's very fine question regarding collection agencies, we brought together a panel of collection agencies twice, a look at best practices. We have recommendations for what every future collection agency contract in the city ought to include in detail. Moreover, we looked very carefully at the process flow of collections for a variety of different types of receivables, and we recommended changes in that so that it goes to the first collection agency, then if that doesn't work, it goes to a secondary collection agency, and then you sell it off as opposed to waiting five years to then write it off. Commissioner.
Yes, if I may, Councilman Alarcon, if you looked at the current accounts receivable numbers that the Office of Finance has in its most recent quarterly report, you'll see the number $541 million. It's important to note that roughly half of that is more than two years old. And in terms of collection, every day that goes by reduces the likelihood of collection. So I do think that for purposes of a number, we need to come up with some kind of category. I don't know exactly what we call it. But we need to separate those collectibles that are realistically collectible and those that are not, so that the $541 million figure doesn't give the false impression that that money is just out there if only we went and got it. The number is significantly less, not sure what it is. But we do need to come up with a way to characterize that kind of debt, which is only remotely collectible.
And it increases.
It increases, certainly.
Mr. Kretsch.
Mr. Kretsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think it's actually interesting that Mr. Alarcon mentioned political campaigns, because I really became interested in this issue as a result of my council campaign and having my colleague in that race, or opponent, or however you look at it, Mr. Galpern, raising a lot of these issues, and finding out indeed that he was completely correct. The numbers sounded inflated when you used the totals, but there's still so many hundreds of millions of dollars that we're missing out on. And I'm not sure everyone on council understands this position and the importance of the inspector general, or exactly what we wind up calling it. We clearly need a certain amount of additional policy, but most of the problems can already be resolved with the policies that have been, we've attempted to implement, the directives that have been put out by the mayor, and not so much done about them. Probably the simplest, the most obvious ones, there's been a directive to collect interests and penalties, there's been a directive to use a city attorney letter with a signature by the city attorney pretty early in the process from each department. Yet around half the departments still don't do it. The main reason is there's no one focusing on just making these kinds of things happen. If we create this position, and we give this position some clout by putting it in an office that counts, like the mayor's office or the CIO's office, so department heads know, if you don't get your act together, they mean business and they're going to hold them accountable. I think this position is absolutely crucial. It costs a modest amount of money, but it literally can be worth tens of millions of dollars to the city of Los Angeles. The sooner we do it, the sooner we'll hit the point where everybody's collecting interests and penalties, everyone's sending out the city attorney letters early in the process. Those two things alone are worth millions and millions of dollars. There's a lot of more complicated steps that we have to take, but even the most basic things have not gotten implemented. We need one person riding herd on all of these changes and making sure that they happen. So I've appreciated working with Mr. Garcetti on this issue. We've been pushing this for a long time. We just need to see it done. And it could be someone internal, if we can find someone willing to do it. I mean, they have to be willing to ruffle a few feathers, and whether they're willing to do it as someone that's worked in City Hall and is still here, and they want to stay here afterwards, that's a question. But whether it's an outside consultant, an internal person, we just need to get this done. And it'll be worth so much money to the city if we do this right. I think we will be very pleased in the next few years at how well this will turn out.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Then, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's good to be with Cindy Mosakowski. I'm trying to fill those shoes over these last six years. Thanks for this work on the commission. First question is, why do we need this position? Shouldn't the mayor be doing this to begin with?
Again, I think this position, this person, this entity will be the single focus of all the policies, all the executive directives, all of the requirements that are now in place that aren't getting done, because everyone who's supposed to do a part of this has many, many other things on their plate, which just in the nature of the job, the nature of emergencies, the nature of what gets attention, this has often gone to the back of the agenda until the controller issues a report, and then everyone, you know, does a little flurry around it.
Right.
So the important thing is that this gives this responsibility to pull this together. And one of the good things, I think we all feel about this, is that when done right and done well, there's, there is some minutia around this building about changing things. But once it's changed, that change is in place. And we will be much better about doing this, there will be a much more routine normalcy about how you collect these bills, how you have the things in place, and how and when you go to the collection agency to do, to make the difference. This person will help implement that change in the ship, changing the course, and getting in place for thereafter, that we will not have to worry about these horrendous controller audits about not doing what we ought to do.
That seems logical, and your credibility, having been a staffer and then elected official, you know more about the bureaucracy and the reality here, and the finger pointing and all of that. So the buck will stop in one spot.
Mm-hmm.
The second question is the money. Is it quarter of a million we're hearing?
I think that's about the number that the CIO and Office of Finance have put together, yes.
And the last question really has to do with the uncollectibles that we always hear about, the big, large numbers. The bottom line is Medicare, Medicaid, and ambulance service is one of the most significant issues. How many hundreds of millions of dollars are we looking at that? And can't we just get to the point where we write it off or clear about it, or find a way in which we collect it? But instead of the demagogery about all that money out there, and yet there isn't the money out there to begin with, explain that particular aspect.
Thank you very much, Councilman Rosendahl. Let me first address your question about the IG, and provide two examples of why I believe and why our commission believes that this can be so valuable. Let's first look at the parking occupancy tax for a moment. Actually, beginning in November, we invited the Parking Operators Association, as well as representatives from the Police Commission, from the Office of Finance, and from the City Attorney's Office to come and speak to us. Interestingly enough, each of those three entities has their own administrative hearing process when it comes to parking occupancy tax-related matters. If you sought to design a system, and if you sought to design a series of ordinances that were meant to fail and not collect money, then you could not have done a better job than what we have right now. And quite frankly, what started as sort of these three different entities saying, well, that's not my responsibility, it's somebody else's responsibility, there came to be, and there is a growing understanding, that these are all interdependent, and that we've got to have one responsibility that, and one person that will take responsibility for fixing that problem. Amazingly, the president of the Parking Operators Association, who came and spoke to our commission, we asked, how much do you think that the city is getting short-changed every year? And the presidents of the association estimated in excess of $20 million a year. And actually, we've come to believe that that number is far greater. So you've got to have one point of responsibility. The second question that you posed was regarding, my mind is...
EMT.
Oh, oh, the EMT, thank you. The fact of the matter is that right now, we've got a system that is in the process of changing over.
Right.
With these devices that the council approved of a contract for, as well as for the outsourcing of the billing and collections. We really are urging the council to stay on top of this and make sure that the city begins to realize more money from this. You had a system where there was something like a 107-page manual on how to fill out the form of form, and you've got a paramedic who shows up to your place. You want them to resuscitate you, or to figure out how to fill out this form with a 107-page explanation of how to do it? So if you make it more simple, you will collect a lot more money. But some of the monies that are legally uncollectible, they shouldn't even be on the books at all.
Well, that's a point that people need.
They need to be removed automatically, period.
Right.
And then in the long term, one of the things we discussed at our commission is the possibility of maybe even blowing up the whole system when it comes to ambulance billings completely in the future. With healthcare reform, there may be opportunities to look at, for example, Medicare and Medi-Cal and say, well, we know pretty much how many bills we're going to send out over the next year. You pretty much know what you're going to pay us, why don't we just cut some sort of a mass deal?
Well, that would be the point, because, look, we get a bill for 1,400 bucks, and we get $300 reimbursed. So on every one of those runs, that's $1,100 that somebody is eating. And we need to put that out there and make it clear that that's the reality of healthcare.
And to simplify it, and maybe by doing these sort of mass deals, we could save ourselves a lot of money in billing, and then we keep more.
Right. And I want to thank you all for doing it. I know you're volunteers, you don't get paid any for this, and you're doing a lot of good work on this. Thanks a lot.
It's our honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to compliment you on the excellent reading material. Very comprehensive.
And thank you for all of your work as well.
Well, it's frustrating, because we know there's solutions, and we somehow find them, and they don't get implemented. The Controller's 2007 audit of collections made 35 recommendations to improve collections. More than one-third have not been fully implemented. City still has no central billing process. Recommendations for centralization go back nearly two decades to 1991, reported by Ernest Young, proposing a city-wide collection unit. Success of good ideas have remained ignored. And that, I see, is the problem. We've done recommendations, we've done audits, we've done everything. When Councilman Mosakowski was on the council, she made recommendations, did motions, did ordinance, did everything. It's not getting implemented. The one person has the authority to make this happen. That one person is the mayor. As a former charter commissioner, with the mother of charters, Janice Hahn, we gave the mayor's office the authority to hire and dismiss general managers who weren't doing the job, period. Some individual in this city has that authority. I don't think that authority is being exercised. Now, we debated this in committee. It went to budget and finance, Mr. Parks. We keep kicking this. The concern I have is, do we have to have another layer within the process? I would prefer to take what dollars we have, give it for the Office of Finance, and let the Office of Finance implement this, not in the mayor's office, not in the CIO or CLA, but let the person who's responsible do that job. The job of the Office of Finance is to collect the money. She doesn't have the resources, give her the resources, let her do that job, and hold her accountable, do that job. I don't see this individual that we're talking about having the ability to really do much more than's already been done and recommended in the past. And that's the frustration. I know when we had problems at the zoo, we took recreation parks around the zoo, made it a department of the zoo. We still have some issues there, but we've made another department. We can't keep curating more bureaucracy. We need to reduce bureaucracy because I don't have the dollars to keep it going. So whatever the dollar value is, and I wouldn't be opposed to the dollar value, of giving this to the Office of Finance, let the Office of Finance do the job that she's charged with doing, and make these general managers held accountable to the mayor, who has that authority to make things change. This position, I have a real problem with, because I just see it as another layer with all the other issues that we've gone over for all these years. And I don't see a whole lot of accomplishments being made, except we're trying to fix with another Band-Aid, when we have a department that can do that with the appropriate resources. And I would prefer to give those resources to that department to make it handled. But we debated this in committee, debated in Mr. Parks' committee, and here we debate on the council floor. And the more I look into it, the more I read about it, the more I see, we're making another layer, because some general managers don't want to do their job? Give the finance department the ability to do the job, and then she can be held accountable and make those other general managers do the job. Now, the mayor ultimately decides what he wants to do. But you're right about the dollars. We assess these outrageous rates on the billing for ambulance service. We know we're not going to collect it, but we put that in the budget, so we have this false budget. These things don't work. So this hard economic time, my recommendation would be, whatever we're going to appropriate as dollars, and put that position in the Office of Finance. That is the office that collects the money, and let that office deal with it accordingly. But I commend you on the project. I know it was a labor of love, but I'll tell you, from my position over here, it's very frustrating to see all these audits and all these issues that are done by other people, and it doesn't happen. It just doesn't move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. We have Mr. Labonge and Mr. Reyes.
Just wanted to stand up for the zoo. Mr. Zine, if I recall, there were issues. And I also recall you were a Los Angeles police officer when there were issues. And then you retired, the problem went away. So I just wanted to stand up for the zoo very clearly on that, Mr. Zine. There's a reason why they did that, because you needed focus on the issue. Needed focus on the issue. My concern is, not everybody is, has the same pair of shoes. And not everybody... And not everybody walks in the same pair of shoes. In parts of my district, it's very affluent. In other parts, it's the most densely populated area outside of Manhattan, and people struggle each day. And this is where they write the most parking tickets. So, is that the right thing to do, to be able to go after that? Do we need to have an office? Do we need to look at having an office? I know they got rid of the court, but do we need a city court that does traffic tickets? Does that make more sense? Does the pie that we spread on the ticket go further? And are we going to keep having to come back for $3 and $5 increments to raise the ticket price because the county or the state wants more? I don't know. But I do know this. In 1978, I was on a train in between Norwich, England and London. And the guy across from me was going to... He was from Australia, and he was going to Singapore. And he said, "I'm going to Singapore. It's a fine city," he said. Yeah, you drop your cigarette butt, you get a fine. You drop this, you get a fine. All of a sudden, fine, 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 fine. I want to be a fine city, not a fine city. There's a balance here. And there's also a short fuse that people that we represent have, that if we're always on the back, they want to get out, or they don't care. There's a balance that needs to be made here. But some of it, I think, is management. So, here's what I say. What's the date that this budget has to be put in place here? April 20th, is that correct? Look at the CIO. What's the history of April 20th? Why not in October 20th, which is six months earlier, that there be a report that each general manager... Mr. CIO, I want you to hear this, okay? April 20th, you do the budget. October 20th, you should have a collections report due. And if you don't have your collections report due, you don't enter your budget. And you force them because that's the only way you get it. There's got to be processes in order to get it done. And I echo a little what Mr. Zine said, but I do want to remember that I want it to be a good city, not that we're always attacking people. You know, how many people are not going to call the fire department because they're afraid of a $1,300 bill right now? How many people are going to hobble out of the mountains of Griffith Park because they broke their ankle because they know somebody else had to pay $7,000 for a helicopter rescue? I think there's got to be a balance, friends. This is why they had a city forum 230 years ago to help the people, if you want to be fair. But also, I think our management has to deal with it in such a way that could better serve the people. I rest my case.
Mr. Rais.
In your report, we have the makeup of the commissioners, and it's great to see you have union representation because we speak to how the labor force, the infrastructure of the staff cooperates with management and having that clarity. But when it comes to delicate areas of function, for example, in different departments, not knowing where staff was, how they collect fees, permits are being processed, the renting of fields, there's a whole range of activity that speaks to how we hold folks accountable and how they conduct themselves. And there is that union-management dialogue. Will these reports get to that level of analysis, or is that something that we're going to allow the negotiations and how we work at these delicate matters? I mean, I just want to get a sense of expectation.
Because of the representation of Commissioner Puriy, we spent a lot of time on this encore as to how there would be interaction with the labor units in the city. And in fact, we had many presentations by labor on some of their suggestions, many of which the council hears itself at budget times. We also had, and I think perhaps let Commissioner Gagin speak about this, presentations by joint labor management organizations within the Bureau of Sanitation, which comes up with all sorts of policy implementation ideas for not only doing their own jobs more efficiently, but helping on the revenue side and coming up with some innovative ideas. So, I think our report, although we're focusing today on just one element, on the collection side, revenue efficiency deals with a whole other broad section of recommendations that are... One of the ones that was fascinating to me is in looking at the uncollected parking tickets and finding how many of those are rental cars and how many of the rental car parking tickets come from cars that are rented out of LAX. And I thought, well, why don't we just change the contract that we have with all the rental cars at LAX to say that if a ticket under their authority, if a car under their authority has a ticket, they are obligated to pay that ticket. Let them go become the collection agency against the person who they rented it to. But their obligation to us for that contract is they pay the tickets. So, there's lots of ideas, lots of ideas to generate revenue that can be done within the framework of what we now do. But this one that we're focusing on is really having somebody with the authority, at least in how we are collecting what is due, better collects.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Gagin?
Oh, nothing to add unless you want to talk about the revenue side.
Well, you may want to speak to this in terms of sanitation and the upcoming report that we have and looking at particularly the role of Labor Management Committee.
Very briefly, we did have the opportunity to hear from the Bureau of Sanitation representatives of the labor management committees that operate in the bureau. The city charter has a provision that encourages departments to institute labor management committees to talk about a number of things, including efficiencies in the way departments operate. And we're looking at, the Bureau of Sanitation is something of a model for institutionalizing the discussion of efficiencies as well as the discussion and ultimate implementation of opportunities to generate new revenue. So, we are exploring, and will address in our second report, the application of that type of model to other city departments.
Thank you again for your service. Thank you.
I will just add to that, by the way, that one of the things that we saw sanitation do is they collect good ideas from this Joint Labor Management Committee. They put them into a matrix, and then they assign an owner, as it were, to each of these ideas. And that owner who's working for the city is the one who carries that idea through. What a great concept.
Great.
Well, they integrate the Labor Management Committee process into their ongoing continually-updated strategic plan process so that there is always accountability for an idea. And then quarterly, there's a report card on the status of each idea.
So, you have results, and you have an evolution, and you have greater levels of efficiencies. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first public comment on this is Arnold Sacks, and then John Walsh will follow on item number 10.
Just thank you. Good afternoon, good morning, Arnold Sacks. Couple of things based on what was said. I believe when they first started the report, the people sitting at the desk mentioned that some of the debt that's to be collected, the interest payments aren't being kept up. So, I was wondering who they reported that to and if those interest payments, the interest on the debt is now being collected. And Mr. Rosenthal, you actually hit it right on the head. For six years, you've been in office, and probably for 10 years, you've had these problems with the budget discussions and collecting debt. So, look at the progress that was made on making the city of LA more business-friendly. There was a plan to put a 10-4 program in where you cut the number of visits to the building and safety and all the permits for business. And how'd that go? Oh, that sank like the Titanic. But what's also interesting about this agenda is item number seven is the Office of Finance Accounts Receivable Citywide Improvement Initiatives. Then you have item number nine... Oh, was it... Excuse me. Item number 25, the Commission on Revenue Efficiency. And then you have another item. You want to have a inspector general. It's repetitious, repetitious, repetitious. That's where you lose it. Where's the standard set here? You have the inspector general, you have for the DWP, the ratepayer advocate in the DWP. You don't even know who you're going to... The mayor. Report to the mayor. Why don't you bring this stuff up in the council? Why don't you step up to the plate and say, "We're not getting the results from the mayor's commissioner for the mayor's heads of departments. We need to get some money here." Thank you.
Thank you. John Walsh is next. After Mr. Walsh will be Doug Arsenault.
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org. And you can email us at Hollywood Dems, D-E-M-S, at gmail dot com. And Facebooking at Mickey Jackson, M-I-K-I Jackson. 100,000 successful server requests per month, 1.2 million per year. The issue of inspector general, well, you know, creating inspector general means nothing. Appointing it is what's important. At MTA, Antonio has held up for three years the appointment of inspector general. You've never seen that in the LA Times, you've never seen that in the press. And believe me, if I say anything inaccurate here, you jump up and shove it right down my throat, okay? So, I want the public to know, anything I say, and they don't jump up and say it's false, you know it's absolutely 100% true. And incidentally, yes. And we want to know on the issues of fines. I would like to know whether Oscar Garcetti's fine up there, whether he has paid his fine yet. I ask you to release documentary evidence so we know, we don't have an inspector general, that you've paid it. And every day you haven't paid your fine, we lose the interest.
Mr. President, this isn't regarding any of these items.
It doesn't have to do with...
Thank you. We're talking about the inspector general today.
Look at, look what he's saying. What is he going to do?
Mr. Walsh?
Arrested for my jewel. And remember, I...
Our next speaker will be Dr. Clyde Williams. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Our next speaker is Dr. Clyde Williams. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Any dimension, you are despicable.
Can please ask... Mr. Walsh, can you please come to order? And Dr. Clyde Williams will be our next speaker. You can't contain yourself, sir. We're going to have to ask you to leave, but please. Please, Dr. Williams, as I mentioned, you are next. Good morning again.
Hard act to follow. If it's not broken, why fix it? Oh, it must be broken there. But how to fix it? It's not just the mayor's office. But remember, we also have boards, we have commissions, and we have managers. In a private company, it's usually the manager that enforces the accounts receivable, and he better get it done because it will come out of his budget the next time. So, why not put some teeth in it? Why have an inspector general in first case? It's just another layer. Who's going to make sure that that one fixes the mayor's office? Well, how can they fix the mayor's office? It's absurd. If you don't have control of the managers, the boards, the commissions, and the mayor's office, an inspector general won't work. It'll just go the same way that it'll probably go in the Department of Water and Power. They have manager. Why aren't they working? Why are they still there if they're not getting the job done? So, I'd highly recommend, forget about the inspector general, make it complimentary that if you're a manager, if you don't collect it, you don't get it the next year. Or maybe it comes out of your salary. And if the mayor's office is in charge of all these managers, maybe it should come out of their budget. Shared sacrifice. I've heard that one before. And next year, it's not going to be much different from this year, except worse. So, why not just have it come out of their budgets? Then they will really start fighting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. That will close our public comment on... Sorry, we have item 25. Mr. Walsh, do you want to comment separately on item 25?
No, I waive my right.
Okay. With that, we'll close the public comment on this. Any other members of the council wishing to be heard? If not, we are going to be moving the committee reports on seven and 25, item 10. We continued for two weeks pending other ways of looking at hiring. So, with that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Yes, Mr. Parks? Do you want Office of Finance to report?
Very briefly, to give an overview.
Okay, we'd have to reconsider the item. We'll just vote on it.
I'm sorry.
Okay, let's open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 1 no.
Cindy, why don't you guys sit at the table and just hear the overview? We're going to ask Office of Finance to come up briefly. Item number seven basically puts together all of the recommendations that came from the Macias report, the core report, about 10 or 12 motions that came from council members. And they put it into a report that's before you today that basically identifies the accountability for a large number that will fall within the Office of Finance. And then the second grouping that will go to the departments, which Office of Finance has taken on the responsibility to notify them and to monitor them. So, why don't you just give us a brief overview of your report and what it entails? And I think if you read this report also, colleagues, you'll see the number of things that have been accomplished, particularly dealing with the paramedic billing, which is a major issue of collecting funds. The one that is also a major issue that's on the forefront is when the LADOT's RFP goes out, they will resolve that issue. And then FMIS will deal with a large part of the accounts receivable. So, why don't you just give a brief overview of your report?
Thank you so much, council member. And I want to thank also, first and foremost, the core commissioners for their support and their working with the Office of Finance and my staff on putting together a comprehensive report. I also want to thank the Chair of Budget and Finance and AGE for working with our office as well, as well as the Controller's Office and many others. The Office of Finance was tasked with putting together a comprehensive report, which included not only the core recommendations, but also the various directives of the city council, the recommendations of the Macias study on centralization of accounts receivable, as well as follow-up on the outstanding recommendations of the Controller's Office as it relates to billings and collections. We took all of the directives, the recommendations, and we created this report, which includes two exhibits. Exhibit I is the report back for finance, which primarily finance will be the lead on the report back, partnering with a number of city agencies on the various recommendations. A number of them, you will note in our exhibit, have been implemented. A number of them are underway, and a number of them require next steps. And when I say next steps, it requires various actions to take place, many of them which are in the preliminary stage. For example, the non-tax amnesty program. That's one of the recommendations that's in the report. The Office of Finance implemented the non-tax amnesty program beginning February of this year. It ended as of Monday. We carried it over until May 2nd because April 30th fell on a Saturday. And the goal for that was $2 million. We are still tabulating the revenue, but we're definitely over $2 million, and we will be reporting back. The lean program, that's one of the programs that the Office of Finance had in our budget. The goal is $1 million. Of course, the program started a little late, the end of December. We're close to... We're over $700,000 of the $1 million goal. There are a number of recommendations that are underway. The documentary transfer tax that Commissioner Galperin spoke about. We, with the support of the city council, we moved forward legislation at the state level, and there is an assembly bill that is currently underway that was heard yesterday in the, I think, Revenue and Taxation Committee. I may be wrong there. But it was approved and is moving forward, which we believe will help in addressing the documentary transfer tax. The second exhibit, basically, it's a culmination of a number of recommendations and directives by the council, the Controller, the Macias study, where the departments are to report back. And what we are recommending that the Office of Finance will work with the various departments at the direction of the council to have those departments rep... at the direction of the Council to have those departments report back within sixty days as to the status of where they are with regards to the recommendations. And so we will be working at, if it is approved, with those departments, and we'll be reporting back. Exhibit I, just to backtrack on that particular package, which are finance-specific, we are asking, as a recommendation, that the Office of Finance will be reporting back quarterly on the status of those recommendations. The third item, which is the RFP for the sale of debt, I just want to say, I know there's a lot of talk about debt collection, but I had my staff do, I had them do a survey because I wanted to know what other cities are doing, particularly the large cities. And I can tell you that Office of Finance definitely is on the leading edge when it comes to the various initiatives in the city of L.A. as a whole. When we talked, when we surveyed about the sale of debt, there was one city, City of Philadelphia, that did it ten years ago, and they didn't do it again because it's very time-consuming, it requires a lot of staff support and effort. So what we are proposing is to use a broker to do this work through an RFP, because we think that's the best way to go. And we are certainly here to work collaboratively with the city departments, the Council, the Core Commission, the Controller, and others, and we hope that this report is approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that, and I'd like to apologize to a patient, Doug Arsenault, who, as name I called, but then we skipped over you before you got to the podium, so come on down again for the final, final word and public comment.
I apologize, I seem to have been upstaged earlier.
No, no, don't worry.
Good afternoon, honorable council members. My name is Doug Arsenault, I'm the Legislative Affairs Manager for the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. VICA represents over three hundred and sixty businesses, that have generated a hundred thousand jobs in the city of Los Angeles and its surrounding areas. On behalf of VICA and its members, I commend Mr. Galperin and Ms. McCaffrey, I apologize if I mispronounced that, and all the commissioners on their recommendations. For over three years, VICA has called upon the Council to implement such a position under its various names, Collection Sheriff, Inspector General, now Executive Director for Revenue Efficiency. With the staggering seventy-six percent of the city's non-taxable receivables more than a hundred and twenty days past due, and forty-two percent more than two years past due, this position is absolutely necessary. The audits by Controller Grul and former Controller Schick have shed first light on this critical breakdown, but there's a need for real-time monitoring intervention. While needless bureaucracy is never good for our city, department reports, mayoral, and council directives and collection guidelines have simply proven strong force for bureaucratic inertia. Only through ongoing focused inspection, reporting, and coordination can the city expect to fix and reform collections, our system. Our city's ongoing budget crisis demands action. VICA looks forward to the implementation of this critical initiative and the rightful recovery of the city's debts. Thank you again.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. And Mr. Parks?
No, I would just like to add one thing that, we're gonna move item seven, but also to make all of you aware that the Core Commission and also the budget advocates have gotten a copy of this report with the understanding that if they have any comments, they certainly can communicate back and forth with Office of Finance, but it's our commitment to bring this back every quarter to give the updates as we move forward. I vote on item seven.
Thank you. All right. With that, let's go ahead and reopen the roll with that change, and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
As are approved. Thank you, everybody at the table for your continuing hard work, and we look forward to having someone in place by the beginning of fiscal year. With that, Ms. Perry, item nineteen, we've got a very patient general manager from the Department of Water and Power. Thank you as well, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'd like to ask Mr. Nichols and Mr. McDaniel to come forward to the table to respond to a few questions about this motion. This is a motion about water conservation and where we are now. Now, this motion was introduced as a result of the governor's announcement in late March. The statewide drought was officially over. As all of you know, the Department of Water and Power implemented water shortage rates, and the purpose of that was to ensure water conservation as a result of the drought. The Department of Water and Power informed the Council that their projected water supply levels would drop by twelve percent from their baseline year of two thousand eight to two thousand nine. So as a result of that, a corresponding fifteen percent water shortage component was instituted to make an adjustment for this projected shortfall to ensure that we had sufficient water. Now, at the time the Council approved the Department of Water and Power proposal, we asked the department to report quarterly on the status of the city's water supply and the need to continue or to terminate water shortage rates. So here we are, at this point, two years later, the statewide drought is deemed to be officially over, so we need to know the status of the city's water supply situation and whether or not we should continue to maintain water shortage rates. Now, at the time we implemented these rates, the Department of Water and Power and the city did make a commitment to the public that once supply levels were normalized, we would revisit the issue. So I have a few questions for Mr. Nichols and Mr. McDaniel, and I would just like to put them on the record, and I'm gonna give you a copy of this so you don't have to reconstruct it, and you can just go through that. I believe Mr. Smith may want to make a few comments. My questions are as follows: Has the department or the board conducted any preliminary review of a need-to-stay water shortage rates given the governor's latest announcement? What shortage level are we at now? What criteria do you use to determine water supply level? And in terms of water purchases, have we reduced the amount we derive from the Metropolitan Water District? And most important to me, what is the current impact on ratepayers due to shortage year rates? Can you make copies of these, I can give it to them?
Do I have any response to those, Dave?
Do we have any other speakers in the queue?
No.
Okay, great. All right, yeah, that'd be great, then, I'll--
Quick, 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 quick. Okay, great. I do have Jim McDaniel, who is our Senior Assistant General Manager, responsible for water. And I think, I think-- Councilmember Perry, I think we will be addressing a number of those items as we go through some prepared comments, and we'll, we'll add on to that as appropriate and be happy to receive some additional questions to the extent that we haven't--
Thank you.
--in some cases probably would have to get back on a few of those items, so let's sort through those as best we can. I would like to start with just, before I turn this over to Jim McDaniel, and Jim will be providing some context for our, for our water conservation programs, our water supply situation, and our shortage year water rates. I briefly want to mention that we do have upcoming, here in, literally within a month or shorter than that period of time, a very robust, very open process for both our water and our power costs, programs, revenues, and rate considerations, and that will, that will be kicking off. We have an existing request from last year from this council for our, for some water rate restructuring and some simplification of our, of our water rates. I want to make sure this council's aware, we've not forgotten that. That will be addressed as part of that overall process. And so we'll be kicking off a process that will be, you know, it'll be both water and the power side. On the water side, we'll be looking at water demands, how those vary by year, our, our water sources, the capital programs that we have, our O and M costs, the rates, the rate structure, and that will include our shortage year water rates and how those play into our overall recovery of the costs that we need to do, recognizing how, how water supplies change from year to year, given the variability of precipitation. So we'll be getting into that in more detail, probably a lot more detail than we can get in here today, but I just want to make you aware that that will be an opportunity for, for council members and obviously the public to, to drill into this in a lot more detail. So I'd like to turn it over now to Jim McDaniel to address, I think he'll address a number of your, of these questions that are imposed here, and give an overview of our water supply situation and some context for the shortage year water rates.
Mr. President, before Mr. McDaniel begins to speak, the only thing I guess I'd like to get out of today is, you know, we've helped people modify their behavior, so the issue today is, do we continue in that vein? Do we lower the shortage level, or do we terminate it altogether? And I don't know whether we can answer that question today, given, given your report, but I'm very interested in what you have to say. But, you know, it was hard enough to get us to get people to make that commitment. We got them there, and I hope that we, as a body, believe that we need to continue to engage in some sort of conservation efforts, maybe loosening it a bit, but to maintain some level of conservation, because in a way, it's money in the bank. So that's all I need to say for now.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm Jim McDaniel, Senior Assistant General Manager from the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power in charge of the water system. I believe you have some, some handout graphs that'll help illustrate some of the points I wanted to make this morning. And I guess I want to start out by saying, first of all, that we, we do have good news on the statewide water picture, water conditions have improved markedly statewide. All of the snowpacks from the various watersheds that supply water to the city of Los Angeles are above normal this year. We are at approximately a hundred and fifty percent, we anticipate about a hundred and fifty percent runoff from our eastern Sierra, L.A. Aqueduct supplies, and the statewide snowpack, depending on which, who's measuring it, between a hundred and eighty-eight percent and a hundred and forty-four percent. So I don't think there's any question that, that we're having a good year this year. I, I think it is worth considering, however, that all the watersheds that I'm talking about, both the Sierra Nevada, the western side of the Sierra Nevada through the State Water Project, the L.A. Aqueduct on the eastern Sierra, the Colorado River supply from the seven western states, and even our local groundwater supplies here in Southern California, continue to suffer from long-term stressors. And, and you overlay that on the fact that we do live in a dry climate. On the state side, even though we've got good snowpack this year, we're still looking at pumping restrictions due to Endangered Species Acts. On the Owens supply, we continue to use water in the Owens Valley to mitigate some of the environmental damage that we've done. We're only exporting about half of the amount of water from the Owens Valley that, that we were even thirty years ago, and a lot of that water's being used for good things. We're filling up Mona Lake, we're rewatering the Lower Owens River, and, and we're controlling dust on Owens Lake. Those are all good things, but they all use water that, that we need. On the Colorado River supplies, the overall snowpack in the, in the Seven Basin State area was above normal this year. However, that whole basin is coming off about a ten-year shortage, and Lake Mead and Lake Powell are still, you got Lake Mead at about forty-three percent full and Lake Powell at about fifty-three percent full, so there's still significant room for improvement on the Colorado. So all of these various long-term problems, I think, call for long-term solutions, and I think the city of Los Angeles is well on, on the way towards getting there. I, I think one of the things I really wanted to point out to the council this morning is the achievements that L.A. D W P customers and the citizens of L.A. have achieved this year. I've got up there on the, on the slide, I think, something that's quite, quite remarkable. Those are, those are, it's hard to read the, the print under the bars, but those are the nine largest cities in the country, cities over a million people. The city of Los Angeles now has a distinction of the lowest, what we call gallons per capita per day, which is the daily use per person for water. Los Angeles is at a hundred and seventeen gallons per person per day, which is the best of all the major cities in--
I'm going to try and stem one.
I agree. So it's, it, that's quite, that's quite an accomplishment.
Quick, 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 quick.
Angelinos have also saved over seventy-three billion gallons of water since we began the shortage year rates. Just to kind of put that into, into perspective, that's enough to serve the annual needs of the cities of Long Beach, Santa Monica, Glendale, Burbank, Beverly Hills, and Fullerton all combined. So it's a lot of water, it's a huge achievement that we've made. And you layer that on top of the fact that overall, the city of Los Angeles is using less water today than we did thirty years ago despite adding a million more people to the city. That is a nationally recognized achievement also. So we've made some great, great progress, we've made some great achievements, and now we have an opportunity to decide how we want to go going forward. And I think the big opportunity we have going forward is to lock in these savings and, and potentially achieve even more.
Yeah.
To that extent, having a rate structure with appropriate price signals is going to be critical to sustain conservation. There needs to be the right price signal sent that discourage waste of water. Our water, our water rates are a hundred percent volumetric, which is almost unheard of in the industry. Most water utilities have a fixed fee in their bill, ours are a hundred percent volumetric. Also, it's important to have appropriately tiered rates to provide the revenue that's needed for ongoing conservation programs, as well as the mandatory water quality investments and infrastructure investments that we need to make in our, our water infrastructure. So to all this, D W P will be proposing, as the general manager said, a rate structure in the near future that we hope that will achieve these goals of providing the conservation-based price signal, as well as building in incentives for conservation. One thing I wanted to note specifically in response to at least a couple of Councilwoman Perry's questions, you asked about MWD purchases. In this next year, or in the current year, we spent about a hundred and thirty-four million dollars on MWD purchases due to the great snowpack, and the coming year, we'll be spending only about ninety-two million on MWD purchases. There's a slide in your package that shows the, the water rate for the Tier One Single Family Water Rate. And just as a, kind of a refresher for people that may not be quite familiar or quite remember how the, the shortage year rates work, basically, under shortage year rates, we keep the Tier One rate the same. We reduce the amount of water that customers are able to buy at that lower rate, and then we've increased the Tier Two rate. But even with that, still ninety percent of all of our water is sold in the Tier One rate, and almost two-thirds of all of our customers are buying their water in the Tier One rate. And if you'll notice, you can see in the last four quarters, the Tier One rate has actually declined.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Mr. Labange, and Mr. Smith, and Mr. Assar in the queue. Tom Labange.
Thank you very much. I think it's very important in this report that you give. Mr. Nichols, good to see you. Mr. McDaniel, I saw in the Today's Paper, you see Today's Paper yet?
Yes.
It's a nice picture of the Los Angeles Department of Water employee in it. Did you see that one?
No.
Yeah, it's right here, in the Los Angeles Times. Frank Gurek, you know him?
Oh, absolutely, that's a Department of Water Resources employee.
Oh, well, he has D W P, that fooled me. All right, I made a mistake. But they say two thou, two hundred, two hundred and nine percent, I guess it is, so increase, which will be good. How, how does that run over in a series of years?
Well, you can see that in the handouts--
No, I'm talking with future years.
How, I'm sorry--
The future years, like there's two, two hundred and nine percent increase.
Right, okay, so on the state, and we're, DWR is measuring as well as we do--
I didn't get one of those handouts from you guys. Thanks, Ron.
On the state system, there's not a whole lot of carryover storage from one year to the next, there's, there's some.
Right.
So, so the, the storage that we have this year will have some impact on next year's, next year's water supply. In fact, we estimate that there's probably a very small chance of having a shortage next year, but we also have seen increasingly unpredictable weather patterns. You know, we've seen these terrible tornadoes in the Midwest and the South, these other things are going on, so I don't, I don't tend to try to guess the weather, but there's limited storage. We'll have some benefit from that going forward, but it's not like it's going to solve our problems for ten years or anything like that.
Right. Water that we store, power that you generate today, you can store, you can store power. What you generate, it's gone today, but water, conservation, conservation of energy is important. And infrastructure, how are we doing on infrastructure?
Well, we've been, as, as I've reported in the past, we've been ramping up over the last few years, our water mainline replacement. We've seen in calendar year two thousand and ten, we've seen one of the lowest years that we have a record on main breaks, so I think those, those investments are paying off, but we're gonna have to have revenues going forward to be able to continue to make those kind of investments in the infrastructure.
And the restrictions, the odd and even, how are we doing on that now that this--
Customers seem to be responding to that quite well. Our, our overall water use is still down about nineteen percent compared to the base year, and our single-family homeowners who are the-- are the ones that are mostly affected by the odd even, they're saving in excess of 20 percent from the base year. So, we're still seeing excellent conservation.
And last question. A terminal lake is a lake that...
Doesn't drain to anyplace else.
And when it doesn't drain anyplace else...
It gets salty.
It's salty. So, just wanted to stand up for Los Angeles, because Owens Lake was a terminal lake. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, the water that Mohlen brought here was dying in Owens Lake. Environmental things should have been done back there. But if it wasn't for the water, we wouldn't be the city where we are. Now, we've got to conserve it. We've got to work with Inyo County. We've got to work with Owens River, et cetera, and restoration. So, I just wanted to make that point about the terminal lake. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Smith?
Thank you very much. And I was pleased to co-author the motion with Ms. Perry to explore this option. I think the great story here is that the people of LA have responded very well, and for the most part voluntarily. It was only till last year that we went into enforced program. They did it voluntarily. When we asked for voluntary compliance, they stood up and did a marvelous job. And they are to be congratulated for that. And the fact is that we, as a city, understand that water is a limited resource. And it's limited by our capacity to gather it and bring it here to LA. And so, we understand those limitations. The people of LA have responded. They are now saying to us, the water emergency is over. They may not understand the finite details that you go through in calculating. But I think what the people of LA want, and what I'm hearing from people, is we want to see a couple of things when we come back and have this discussion. First of all, they believe there should be elimination, or at least a major reduction, in the rate fee that is being charged for the excessive use. That goes to the rate block and the reduction in the 15 percent we threw in to that calculation. And that is one, first thing we want to have you address, is what can that be reduced to? We know there will be another drought in years to come. We always have to have that in the future. But rate blocks one and two already have a calculation in there for purchased water. And so, we built into the system a long time ago, the ability to move our rates up and down, calculate in purchased water within reason. It's drought years that are not part of the calculation, and that was what was done last year. So, I think what we hear is that, one, you need to look at the fees that are being charged, the calculation that is being made for drought purposes, that should be reduced. That two, rate block one and two already have a calculation in it. So, purchased water is part of this base rate already. So, if MWD doesn't reduce commensurately, we have our own resources to offset a good portion of that, what we get from MWD. That calculation should be covered under the normal rate blocks one and two, under normal circumstances. And finally, I think a cessation is absolutely necessary for fining people for their non-compliance to the rules and regulations that we enforced last year, and that is the time of day, day of use, et cetera. The people shouldn't be fined under these circumstances because the drought legally is gone. And we may have real legal implications if we go into that discussion. So, I think cessation of fines is necessary, no matter what. Two, we take a look at the rates and see what we can do to adjust them appropriately. And then finally, continuation of the voluntary conservation effort. We have to make people understand that the drought rules that we enforced two years ago really are the ongoing rules that they should follow, even if there's no penalty for them breaking that rule. And the way that you do that is in your new billing system that you're rolling out, you're beginning to get ready, that you always put in there, your goal is to do, is to use no more than this amount of water. And if you get into rate block two, your goal is there. So, people understand, when they look at their bill, they go, oh, my goodness, I'm over this month, and I shouldn't be. And that someday, if we get back to conservation and enforce rules, they're going to be penalized for that. So, keep it in their mind that conservation is the ongoing policy permanently of this department and this city. And I think you'll get the voluntary compliance, that we've had tremendous success, that you just mentioned, the incredible statistics, and how we rate nationally. So, that is what my message to you is. That's why I signed on this motion. I think it's what the people want to hear back from our department.
Thank you much. Just in response, Councilman, on the Tier One and Tier Two, and this was an issue that we brought before council in the past, and we've kind of been struggling with it. We went into shortage year rates, so we didn't deal with it right then. But it's this issue, the so-called Tier Two fix, I think you might remember us coming back. And the problem that we have is, in the existing rate, the purchased water cost is not added to the Tier Two right now. It's, there was an assumed number that's kind of just built in there, and we've got to resolve that. So, that's one of the things we want to bring back to the council, is a fix for that. And then also, I just wanted to say on your idea on the bill, I couldn't agree with you more. And I don't know if you've seen our new bill format that's coming out, but it's got some great graphics that tell people exactly where they are with the tiers, and so they know where they stand. And it's much clearer than it was in the past.
It's refreshing. I've been yelling that around here from before I was elected, that you guys are using a 1970 DOS system. It's really ridiculous. So, I'm glad you're spending the money to fix that.
I'd like to upgrade to DOS, actually, on home.
[laughing] Yeah. DOS, Romanu I. So, anyway, I appreciate that. That's the right way to go. And I did have some discussion with Austin Buhner before you got here, Ron, and that is that we had to look at, if you look at all the rate structures in power and water both, we have ECAFs, we have all these very complicated calculation systems in there. And we need to simplify that and have just a base rate, and then have these other emergency opportunity rates that are available, separate off these rate blocks and all that stuff that are kind of hidden. And I think we need a very clear, very understandable system so people understand why they're paying what they're paying. And when they see that they're paying less than Edison and others, and that here's the system that's set up, they'll understand and appreciate it much, much more.
We agree with you on that, particularly on the water side. And you'll be seeing that as we roll this out here in a few weeks.
Great, 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 great.
Great, 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 great.
Mr. As.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank you. As you can see in the charts, we're able to look at rates in the Tier One, and we've been responsive to folks who are in a position, have to make decisions, do I pay this bill, pay for medication, or do I pay for rent, or do I pay for food? So, that's a harsh reality that many of our constituents live with. And so, as we look at this whole process of, do we have enough water in our system? Is this drought really over? On what basis do we start making decisions? Do we do it one year, two years, three years? Hoping to report back that we get a better sense of what is, can I put this, what's real when it comes to, what's a real rainy season for the Southwest, for a place like Los Angeles, versus what sounds good politically because of campaign seasons and people running for office, and what people want to hear? I mean, I think there's a balancing point here. And taking that into consideration, we look at the monies that are coming in, and we go through our billing process, we collect revenues. How much are we investing in our local water supply infrastructure? Are we just relying on more water imports? To what degree are we actually factoring in our capacity within our own city limits, within the regions around our city, versus continuously paying money off of water import? Then last is our temperature zones. That's something that we were looking at in terms of our water rates. The analysis of how our temperature zones in our city vary. We have microclimates, and how that determines how much water we use for irrigation, for personal use. How have we been able to get to that point, which understand how these microclimates, these temperature zones, affect how we use our water? And hopefully, that will be part of the report backs that we get back.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. That's our last speaker from the council. Dr. Clyde Williams, our first speaker from the public.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Serena, also LA 32 Neighborhood Council, DWP liaison. Question. Was the rate changed today? Or will it continue? Or will it be terminated for the shortage? I don't know. Didn't seem to be. So, I presume that I can tell my people that it's going to be continued as it was last year, until some future date. Well, how did they get here? Well, the Sierra Club actually did a comparison of all of the water districts in the Southern California, LA, and Orange County area. And DWP had one of the most stringent, strong programs to conserve water. It's a very good thing. I get along with around 50, 55 gallons per person per day, rather than 100 and some odd. One of the things in the background that we have to consider also is that for every acre foot that comes into the basin, about only 60 percent of it actually flows out through sewage stream of plants. Most of the water that we consume, our largest fraction of it, goes for irrigating our lovely green lawns and things like that. So, one of the issues in the future will be a 20 percent reduction in our usage. Well, we've already achieved that. So, why not leave the rates the way they are now? Or add a couple more rates for the highest, say the upper 25 percent zone, or the upper 50 percent zone? So, there should be some commensurate reflection of the rates to how we abuse the water resources that we have, and that everyone expects to get much more extreme in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker on item 19.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. I believe I heard in this discussion, implementation of a shortage year rates. And I also heard that the council was asking for quarterly reports back from the DWP, and some of the questions that were asked. So, I was wondering, when was the last report, what quarter was the last report given in? And why weren't some of these questions asked then that would have been available to be answered now? I'd like to thank Councilman Labange for asking about the infrastructure repairs. I think that's just as important, to get a status on the city's, the DWP's rate of infrastructure repair, especially since, he mentioned Today's LA Times, in the business section, it mentioned that the solar initiative, solar panel initiative sponsored by the DWP has been suspended because they only have $30 million funded for it and $112 million in requests. And then I also heard there was $134 million being spent to buy water from MW, NDW, MWD. And this year, they expect to spend only $92 million, which eventually comes out to like $42 million in savings. So, with that money, I mean, I know it's not really saving savings, but we also have heard from some of the other GMs, including the new GM, that he's going to implement over $200 million in savings. Yet last year, the acting GM Freeman said he couldn't spend $72 million to pay the city in its final payment due to the budget. So, the numbers they're throwing around here leave you totally confused. I'm just wondering, could they use some of that money for the solar panel initiative? And again, last quarterly report, when was that held?
John Walsh is our last speaker from the public.
Congrat, John Walsh, PlaguingHollywoodHighlands.org. Congratulations, Mr. Nichols. I had a feeling when you spoke here before that you were an honest man. I just had a feeling. You have proved by, in the last few months, that you are an honest man. You are, the procession of crooks that have been running this agency is well-known. Another way he proved he was an honest man, and it's almost kinetic. You walked in there and you got rid of Ramon Raj. This guy's been around at MTA, he's been at the DWP, everything. I mean, you just immediately, it's like extrasensory perception, you got rid of the most crooked person at the agency. And great job. And I'd like to say to you two gentlemen, do you feel how cold it is here? Do you understand that we have the air conditioning on here, and we are wasting enormous amounts of money? That's not you. That's not you. That's the, that's these people up here. My hands are numb. And I'd like to point out, DWP used to mean waste and pollution. And I want to say, even at its worst, you were better than, this agency was better than Southern California Edison, and up in Northern California, where they blow whole cities up. I mean, at least the, and incidentally, remember, DWP is socialism in action. Not free enterprise, socialism. And you were very good at doing it. And I just want to say that you've done an enormously great job so far. And if you want to criticize me, just jump up and say anything you want, and call me a liar. That's the culture here. HollywoodHighlands.org. I've destroyed your career by praising you.
Thank you very much. There are no additional cards on this item. So, Mr., Department of Water and Power, Mr. Nichols and Mr. McDaniel, we will have you come back probably in six months and update our discussion. Madam Clerk, what is the matter before us?
Thank you.
Is a motion filed?
If you wish, you may let it be noted and filed or approved.
All right. And then the department will be incorporating the comments and recommendations made by Mr. Smith in response to their report. Thank you very much. We're going to take item nine up next. I believe Mr. Garcetti wanted to speak on that item.
Put the cards in the public, and then I'll make some comments.
All right, great. We have some cards on this item. Arnold Sacks is our first speaker. Joe, Joe Kerman? Is that the correct pronunciation from EAA? Is Mr. Sacks done with his time for today? Mr. Sacks has one minute left for today. Are you waiting your time to speak now, Mr. Sacks?
Madam Chair, you have somebody at the mic.
All right. Well, you weren't here. So, do you want to come on up here and take your minute, and then Joe can go next? You have one minute left, Mr. Sacks.
It's like that quarterly report that you just, the guy come back in six months. Well, this is a perfect opportunity for the living wage ordinance to be enacted for city employees. You know, Councilwoman Han, Councilman Alakon, you stood up, you pushed for that living wage ordinance for low-income workers to get two bucks an hour to pay for health retirement benefits. Why not city employees? Why not give them the same benefits you show to the low-income constituents that work in the menial jobs? Here's a two-tiered program. Stand up and say, I think this is right. Look at the money that would be saved. And look at the benefits for the city employees. If it's good enough for some guy vacuuming airplanes...
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. Joe Kerman, you're our next speaker.
Joe Kerman, the executive director of the Engineers and Architects Association, EAA. And I wanted to speak to the draft ordinance, which would amend the LA admin code to eliminate the LACERS Board discretion to increase the maximum subsidy amount for retiring medical plan coverage for anyone who retires on or after 7/1/2011. There seems to be some dispute as to whether the annual increase is a vested benefit, as in the medical plan coverage itself. And EAA has just begun successor MOU negotiations, and this appears to be a very hostile preemptory action against employees represented by EAA linked to a negotiation process, which is still in its very early stages. During the 2011 MOU negotiations, EAA bargaining good faith and potential options regarding the sustainability of benefits were not precluded by preemptive council actions of this type. Thank you.
Arminek Nurydian, I guess he's left the chamber. We'll go to the valley for Donna Pierman.
I'd like you to vote yes on this. They already have a very good plan that they have on the table, and I think they should go for it and vote yes on the plan we have already now. Don't listen to Arnold Sacks. He's not involved with the city employees. The city employees know what to do. And I want you to vote yes on this.
Thank you very much. Marian Fogler.
Still a question of voting yes or no on this. Question is, is healthcare a given right, or is it a contributory? And I think it's both. And I think that the fair thing is that the... And I think that the fair thing is that the employees need to understand that there's no free lunch. Nothing is going to be as good as it used to be because of the costs and because politicians spend so much. But we should not let them have the upper hand. We need to have the upper hand. The coalition needs to take back and take control and say yes for these, the retirement healthcare, the four percent, and that they cannot take it away from you ever again, and that Arnold Sacks represents a low-income bracket, which to me is pulling down the middle class and doing a very good job at it, Arnold, serving his, where's your constituents, your voters? Where are those people who are the low-income workers? Doing something about these politicians down here with spend, 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 causing these kind of things that are taking place now, nine-one operators, and then the central services being cut by CRA spending. You know, this money is going into the payroll. It's not going to go back into general fund, folks. It's a win-win situation. And I tell you right now, I just got off the phone Kaiser, and it looks very, very bad. If you go along with this retirement healthcare, you're going to live to regret it. And I'm going to have to retire before July 1st, 2011, because we're not going to be able to keep up with the costs of this medical cost. You're going to lose, I hope all the retirees, people retire before July 1st, 2011, get out of the city. Retire and drive, drive the city in bankruptcy. I hope you all go under.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, we've had a lot of discussion about this, so this should be a relatively brief vote. One thing just to point out from previous speaker, this does not impact our current retirees. We cannot by law take away those healthcare benefits, nor are we proposing to for them or their beneficiaries. And while the budget picture remains unclear for other cities and other states, including our own state, I think this is part of what we've laid forth as a clear path in Los Angeles to balance the budget. We've tried to focus on problem solving rather than politics. You know, walkouts and lockouts are, to me, evidence of a failed process. Here, we have one that has worked well, whether it's been our early retirement, structural reform for thousands of city workers, and accord that both cuts budget costs and increased the delivery of critical services. It's been approved by fourteen of eighteen bargaining units. To both the A, and we said this with our sworn as well, for folks who still have their contracts outstanding, this is not something in bad faith. It's not meant to be a club over anybody. We've actually been having good discussions, both with our firefighters and our law enforcement folks. I anticipate that, and will help guide that for our engineers and architects as well. But today, this action will move forward with further structural reform for the remaining four units that are out there right now from the city coalition. We've all strived to really underscore, I think, fiscal responsibility in these tough economic times, and part of it, this has been taking swift and certain action. Los Angeles has reduced its workforce by more than four thousand workers already to a level in the general fund civilian side of when Tom Bradley left office with a million more people here. This unprecedented, and sometimes, and something that no other jurisdiction that I've looked at in the country can claim, we've worked to strengthen our reserve fund and implement cuts and efficiencies. And we've acted in ways that have given us choices. We haven't done this with a meat cleaver, so the budget stays on track in any scenario. In this case, ensuring savings with the fourteen units ratifying, and also with the four that did not. We said either way, the budget was going to be balanced, and it will. But in order to see that through today, we must act to freeze retiree healthcare benefits for employees in these four bargaining units. That doesn't mean that in the future, we won't address that. It just means right now, the benefit that exists will be frozen there. The future increase of that is something that isn't guaranteed. We can't have healthcare costs go up threefold without addressing that in one way or another. Those employees that did step forward and say, let us vest that, but in exchange, we'll pay something more into our benefits, really get that shared sacrifice piece. We pay for something and we get something, but not paying for something doesn't make the problem go away. So this freeze will make the city immune from some of the skyrocketing costs of retiree healthcare and save tens of millions of dollars annually. And as Mr. Smith, others have stated, these units should be aware that the city can still accept their approval of this accord. We urge them to reconsider, but that window is a very short one. So today, colleagues, I urge you to move right forward in the right way here on this healthcare benefit. In San Diego, it's interesting, I was handed this article from a few days ago in the San Diego Union Tribune, that there is a Superior Court ruling that the city of San Diego has no obligation to provide healthcare to current employees once they retire at all, despite a promise made by Pete Wilson, then the mayor, nearly thirty years ago. Now, obviously, that could be appealed. That's not even anywhere near what we're doing here today. What we're saying is, the current retiree benefit will be frozen there, so that is still in place. But as we see healthcare costs skyrocket, if we can't step forward and share some of that cost, we will balance the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Ditto on that. And I really want to appeal to the four unions that are in discussions right now. Please reconsider where you were before. If you invest in yourself, in your healthcare and in your retirement, you're doing the right thing at this point in the process. We do not want to lay people off, and we don't want to furlough any more people. It's the right thing to do. We also need other revenue streams going forward, and we're looking at different strategies. But I say to everybody out there, just pencil it all up. It's better to invest in your own healthcare and invest in your pension than it is any other strategy at this point. And with the majority of the unions, fifty-seven percent of the workforce in the coalition have agreed to it, please come along. It's in your best interest to do it. And thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. All right, Madam Clerk, there are no further speakers in the queue. Would you please open the roll on this item? Close the roll, then tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much.
Amendment that was put in there to make sure that it didn't just cover up to the retiree, but beyond the retirement as well.
Do we need to revote this again, then?
No, that is as amended. That was already removed.
Is as amended, and this matter will come back for a second meeting in thirty days because it's a pension-related issue.
Yeah, for folks who don't know process on these, they have to come back for a second meeting in thirty days either way, so this was the first vote.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, what is our next item? Item number one, called special for cards. All right. Mr. Walsh has one minute left today to speak. Mr. Walsh passes. Um, let's see, the only, okay. Michael Cardion.
It's on twenty-one. Twenty-one? Is this on twenty-one?
This is one.
Twenty-one is what I put in.
All right, you have a card here. Okay, I'm sorry, that's a mistake. Yes, you're correct. All right. All right, we're not on twenty-one. Mr. Walsh, we're on one right now, so there are no speakers on the queue on one, so we will open the roll on one. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item? Item number six, called special by Councilmember Wezar. Mr. Wezar.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask, although the hearing has been closed, I ask that we reopen the hearing and allow each of the speakers to speak one minute, if it's okay with my colleagues.
All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Wezar, he wanted to do...
The hearing has been closed, but I'm asking that if we could reopen the hearing and allow each speaker for one minute, please.
All right, great. Let's make a, Mr. Wezar, do you have a second on that motion? Second by Mr. Corretts, to reopen the hearing on this matter. Motion is before us now. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Motion to reopen the hearing has been granted, so one minute per person. All right, I'm going to call four people at a time. Edward Flores, Paul Hamilton, Martha Vasquez, and Henry Berber. Sir, excuse me for just one moment. I'd like to address an issue that Mr. Smith has just brought up. Motion to, just don't go too far, it'll only take a second. Motion to reconsider item nineteen, as Mr. Smith wants to put an instruction on the record, so we have a motion to reconsider item nineteen with a second from Mr. Zion on that. Would you please open the roll on nineteen? Close the roll. All right, Mr. Smith?
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. We just wanted to request of the clerk that the instructions that we gave the Department of Water and Power are added to the file, so those are instructions to them in the file.
Thank you very much. And we need to vote on that, as amended. Do we need to vote on that as amended?
Yeah.
Okay, open the roll on Mr. Smith's motion as amended on item nineteen. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, now we will go back to item number six. And I believe the first speaker was Edward Flores? Was it Edward Flores?
For Hamilton to speak before me, please. Do that out of order, if possible.
Harry Berber.
My name is Henry Berber. I'm one of those merchants from Alvera Street. My family has had La Luz Del De restaurant for about fifty-two years. And I just wanted to thank the city council for all the support that they've given us throughout the past years. And we look forward with the expectation that in the future, we'll be receiving the same support. Now that in the prospective leases, increased revenue is going to be collected from the merchants on Alvera Street, we urgently ask that some of these funds be allocated to a professional merchandising plan for, to promote Alvera Street throughout the year for the occasions, like Las Posadas, the blessing of the animals, we have a lot of people. But since we're expected to pay increased rent, we're going to need increased revenue. So we need more people coming to Alvera Street throughout the year. And we'd be very grateful for any help you can give us in this area. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm Paul Hamilton. I represent the Alvera Street Merchants Association. Again, I would reiterate what Mr. Berber said. We thank you for your time. We especially thank Councilmember Wezar and the CLA and the CAO for the hard work that they've undertaken on this. I need to bring to your attention that although the merchants are going to support what I understand to be Councilmember Wezar's motion, this may be a bitter pill for certain merchants to follow, particularly the medium to large stores. The numbers are huge, a hundred to, a hundred and seventy-five to two-hundred percent increase. The rents that they will pay, new rents, will equal twenty to forty percent of their revenues, and these are certainly not long-term sustainable rents. So thank you so much for considering that.
Sure, thank you. Edward Flores.
Good afternoon, Councilmen. My name is Edward Flores, and I'm a fourth-generation Alvera Street merchant. My family has been selling paquetos and Mexican food on Alvera Street since 1934. I have here reforming one of the leases here, and many of the merchants are concerned about some of the provisions here, namely the rent. They're very high, and we would like to ask that some investments be made in Alvera Street. And you be aware that there should be some kind of collaboration or relationship between the merchants and the city in order to make Alvera Street a better place. A significant amount of revenue is going to be collected through CAM, rents, and security deposits. And if we were to acquire the services of a professional marketing firm, they could collaborate with a plaza, museum across the way, and help revitalize the whole entire area of Alvera Street, bring more visitors to Alvera Street, and be much more efficient at using those funds for that purpose. Also, we're going to have a bullet train coming to fruition sometime in the future right across the way in Union Station. It would be a great place to get more visitors to come and visit Alvera Street right when they get out of Union Station. So I urge you to consider that, and perhaps the Budget and Finance Committee or our councilmen could further that idea. Thank you.
Martha Vazquez.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Martha Vasquez, and I own Alveritas Village on Alvera Street. The Alvera Street merchants thank you for all the support you are giving to Alvera Street for many years. We need you here to support our new expenses and the way as we professional marketing. Without this, we will not survive. Thank you very much.
Vivian Bonzo, followed by Norma Garcia, followed by Mike Mariscal.
My name is Vivian Bonzo, president of the Alvera Street Merchants Association. I'd like to thank this city council and all the prior city councils for all the support, along with other elected officials, Miguel Santana, Jerry Miller, Supervisor Molina, for all of their help, and our councilmen especially, for working tirelessly to help us resolve many of these issues. At this time, councilmembers, we do need your support to promote Alvera Street. Without that promotional plan, whether it's done now in the budget process or whenever, we must have it in order to support new sales, to generate the rents so that we have a steady flow of money coming into the city. That's important. And we'd just like to say that if the rents are not sustainable for some of the large stores, we continue to have those concerns today, and the councilman's aware of those. However, we will be back to the city council to ask for consideration in the future. And we do appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Norma Garcia, please.
I am Norma Garcia from Casa, California, on Alvera Street for forty-six years. We are no opposed to the increase in rents, but I think the process need to be in reverse. First, the city need to bring a good marketing plan for the street, for us to share the profit coming in. If we receive it, we'll be able to give back. Remember that nobody loves Alvera Street more than the merchants. Management's can and gold, but a we remain. Thank you for your support.
Mike Mariscal.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Mariscal. My family is one of the original families, five generations on Alvera Street, serving the city of Los Angeles. I am a living cultural resource. My shop has been listed and caught up in the configurations, and I believe that my shop has been miscalculated or miscategorized. I am asking that the correction be made, otherwise I will fall into a situation where I'm not going to be able to sustain. I don't want to see anybody leave Alvera Street because of these new rents. I want them to be, to everybody to be able to maintain new revenues. Again, I also support that the city work with us to help revitalize and bring Alvera Street back to where it was many, many years ago, so that we all can benefit. The city can benefit, and the merchants can benefit, and be able to pay the new rents. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette Rondo, followed by Albert Velasco. Our final speaker will be Richard Chase. Those will be our final three speakers. I don't have a card for you, ma'am.
We can't get it in.
No, I don't have it.
We can't get it in. We lose the right to it.
That's all I got. Go ahead.
Hello, council. My name is Jeanette Rondo. I'm fourth-generation Alvera Street merchant, and this is my beautiful mom, Emma Gutierrez. We have five generations, and we're one of the last families to live in the Sepulveda House on Alvera Street. We respectfully request that you approve a small portion of the new rents and CAM, the sum of no less than a hundred and fifty thousand exclusively for professional marketing efforts that will benefit the Alvera Street merchants, El Pueblo, and the city. It's not that much compared when you think of the millions that is put aside just for El Pueblo management. Our ideas include having local personalities to come and film at Alvera Street, and also maybe film stars to come, to come and promote their films. A farmer's market that would encourage foot traffic, musician and activities for family atmospheres, and art and crafts fair, and artisans from Mexico and LA tying it to downtown LA.
Thank you, ma'am. Albert Velasco, can you have two minutes to speak, folks? There you go.
President, councilmembers, thank you for this time. My grandfather was the first merchant of Alvera Street, and he'd be happy to see that it's still functioning today. We've had some bumpy roads to get over. We would hope, I want to bring one thing that comes to mind, so many of our visitors are school children across the city, and I don't know if the city really looked at the impact, in some cases, four-hundred percent rent increases. We're going to be forced to raise prices, and some of the children that come come from impoverished areas of the city. I think that we're closing the doors to some of those... I think that we're closing the doors to some of those children. But I would hope that we will have a professional firm and at least a commitment of a minimum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to promote Alvera Street in the future. We've, over the past decades, seen a decline in advertising dollars, and do, in portion due to the economic downturn, or besides that. But we would like to see you folks here in the council help promote Alvera Street, too. We hear a lot of talk about the lease week, Chinatown.
Thank you, sir. Richard Chase, followed by Emily Martinez, Andrea Garcia, and Peter Martinez. Those will be our final speakers.
Hello, council. My name is Richard Hernandez Chase. I am the photographer of the bureau, the carreta on Alvera Street. I'm one of the few merchants that signed a contract back in April. It's been really hard for me to make the rents, and I've been trying, you know, I'm caught up pretty much. But, you know, like everybody else, we need more promotion of Alvera Street. Though the new plaza across the street's going to be a great addition, but I think there should be a little bit more money invested in promoting Alvera Street and cheaper parking. I always hear complaints about, "I can't buy your picture because I have to pay the parking," you know, thirteen dollars doesn't seem like a lot, but, you know, to some of the families it is. And just, I guess, keep working at it, I guess. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Emily Martinez?
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Emily Martinez. My family's been there since nineteen thirty. I'd like to thank all the parties involved with coming up with lease negotiations, our councilmen, the city attorney, and the office at Alvera Street. I think they've done a very good job. And there are seven tenants right now on Alvera Street that pay fair market rate. There are seven of us that have signed the new leases since last April, 2010, and are paying the new fair market rate. We signed in good faith, and whatever the outcome of your votes today, if you do not vote for this, at least give the merchants that have signed their leases since last year have their leases approved. The rents are fair and equitable. Everybody has to give, and we have a good staff there. Once the monies are coming in, I'm sure they'll do a great job of promoting Alvera Street. And the large stores, if they can't make it, maybe we should divide the stores in half, like we have with another store there, and rent them out so that thus the owners can rent what they can and rent it out to the others.
Thank you, ma'am. Andrea Garcia and Peter Martinez.
Yes, hi. My name's Andrea Garcia, and I'm one of the five founding families still left on Alvera Street. I've been paying my rent since April, and I've been trying very hard to make that rent. We need to have more dollars come to Alvera Street, and I'm hoping that with increased rent, John Kopinski and his staff can promote Alvera Street the way it needs to be promoted so I can continue my responsibility that you have required of me to continue paying my rent. And I just, I just hope that you people here support Alvera Street and think of ways in which we can better combat this negative publicity that we've had to suffer this past year. It's been very hard. People from Chicago and New York are calling me Andrea. Is Alvera Street closed down? They think we're closing, and that we have to combat somehow with the city's help and a better publicity. We have to.
Thank you. Peter Martinez?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Pete Martinez. I'm a business owner down on Alvera Street. I urge you to pass and approve this concession. I've heard of you talk about legalization of Alvera Street. The city has put in twenty million dollars of Meekla funds this last two years to improve the, make improvements here. And I just want to find out, we were one of the merchants also that signed the leases. We've been paying in good faith our rent, and I want to find out what will happen to our leases if this is delayed once again. I'd like to thank all the individuals involved. Two of your staff members, Councilman Zine, Adrian Garcia, and Jimmy Blackman worked also on those leases, Councilman Wezar, and our ambassador to El Pueblo, Councilman Tom LaBanche. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's any more speakers, we need to get the cards because the final speaker of the final speaker is John Traulich. This is the last card I have on this final matter. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Counsel, I just wanted to address the parking issue very, very, very briefly. There used to be a huge walk-up crowd to Alvera Street before a Dodger game, for instance. Now the idea of spending thirteen dollars to park in order to get a couple of tacos before the game is just not real wise, and especially when you compare it to the two-dollar validated rates that charged at The Grove or at Hollywood and Highland. Thirteen dollars is so exorbitant for a lot of people. And I realize it brings a lot of revenue into the city, but I think it's penny wise and pound foolish. If the parking was lowered, there would be more people parking, there would be more people spending money, and more tax dollars coming in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Carrion. We are down to a bear quorum, colleagues. A bear quorum at this time.
Alvera Street's part of the history of Los Angeles. You keep raising the rates of the merchants there. You want market rates, but you're not giving market service. You're becoming a slumlord. We need you to protect the citizens here by cleaning up the air, cleaning up your property. It's your property. You're the landlord, yet you want to raise the price, but you don't want to raise the quality of service that you're giving these people. That's a shame. I've talked to Mr. Reyes about this in his district over and over. Nothing gets done. Weed, abatement, everything's up there, yet prices go up, prices go up, and prices go up. You demand that they pay you. It's extortion. You're extorting these poor people from making a living by raising the prices the way you're raising them, but yet you're not getting them a quality service. You're not keeping up the property the way you should be, yet you demand other people to do that. Every day, there's notices going out to everybody else, keep their properties up.
Thank you.
You don't do it.
Mr. Wezar, then Mr. LaBones.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I think the city of Los Angeles is fourteen years late in getting to this point where we are finally documenting leases on public space that should have had these documents over fourteen years ago. It's a long time coming, and I think it's the appropriate time to move forward so that the city begins to own up to its responsibilities as a landlord. And it starts by taking the first step and getting a lease, a negotiated document that makes both parties have an understanding as to each other's responsibilities. I first want to thank the staff at the CAO, the CLA, the city attorney's office, and the staff at El Pueblo for their hard work in this matter. I also want to thank the merchants for their continued commitment to the birthplace of the city of Los Angeles. Each individual merchant should be given a debt of gratitude for not only getting to where we are today, but for also contributing to what is one of the best cities in the world. My goal all along through this process was to make El Pueblo self-sufficient, and through this negotiation process, it didn't start off that way. It didn't seem like we would get there, or it didn't seem like we would involve the merchants. Back in April of 2010, the commission at El Pueblo approved a lease that did not take into account the merchants. I worked with the city attorney's office, the mayor, and the CLA, and the CAO to ensure that the merchants were brought to the table and also involved in coming up with a mutually agreed-upon lease. And now, as we're here, I think we've done that. What was proposed in April of 2010 was what was called a market rate proposed rent. What is on the table today is a twenty-five percent to thirty percent lower than what was originally proposed. This takes into account not only the tough economy that we are in, but also takes into account the hard work that the merchants have given to make El Pueblo what it is. It also includes various options where, if proven, merchants can have up to fifty percent of the rent taken off from the original offer should they show hardship. They're also able to pay in installments of up to three years should they show that they are not being profitable. I added an amendment in committee last week that also allows them to pay over sixty months for those merchants whose rent is increasing by a hundred and fifty percent to be able to pay the security deposit and the back rent in sixty months. I believe this is a very fair proposal. I believe it takes into account the merchant's history at El Pueblo, the tough economy that we are in, but also it allows the city to move forward in a way that makes us responsible for this great public treasure. I know we have a lot of work ahead of us, particularly marketing El Pueblo better. That process needs to be worked through the budget process. We also have a motion that I hope we adopt that will clarify two things. One is the issue of requiring, as it is in the lease right now, that owners be at the premises eighty hours a month. We have now asked that they provide some personal commitment to the place as outlined in the motion. And also, we are asking the general manager of Pueblo to verify and resolve the outstanding issues relative to the appropriate allocation of space and rates for the retail office and storage. The current lease as written does not include storage rates. It only includes retail and office. The general manager will come back to us to clarify those issues. But there's no turning back now. When I first brought up this issue about a year ago to finally get leases for El Pueblo, one of my colleagues, a good friend of mine who's counsel, said, "Every prior council member has tried since I've been here, and we probably are going to face the same opposition again." Folks, we've come a long way. We're here. It's time to move forward. It's a very good deal for all parties involved, including our taxpayers, our merchants, and the place that we love and call El Pueblo. Colleagues, ask for your A-vote on this matter. Thank you.
Mr. LaBones?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Wezar, for your effort on that, too. I just want to ask the city attorney to come to the table, and as they do, as we go forward with this transformation. I love what you said about Union Station. A hundred thousand people come in a day through Union Station. To try to capture them in some way to enjoy the spirit of El Pueblo is so important. I also want to see, just to let you know, to put it out on the table, that the management create a bike rental facility there, because people will come from around the county and would love to ride bikes in downtown LA, and it's the place it should be. Have the people come to you. And as a representative of the farmer's market, just to let you know, their core business comes from Baldwin Hills to Mahollen, from Beverly Hills to Silver Lake. We got to get people from Pasadena, El Sereno, Silver Lake to come down, and we got to change the parking to have it flow. At times when it's high use, you have a higher rate, but on what we'd say a normal day, lower rate. That's for another day. But I thank you, Mr. Wezar. It's very important, and we got to connect more Main Street. I once was in Paris, and in Paris, they have these little art stands. And why can't we put art stands, Mr. Rosendahl, on top of the freeway on Main Street to connect what is the civic center? And we need to go to Washington, too. Where do we go? We see government buildings. Our city hall, this plaza here, all the way up, is the largest concentration of government buildings outside of Washington, DC. That has to be connected to our birthplace. So I congratulate everybody, and it's been a struggle. We're here today. I'll turn my time over to the city attorney. If there's anything, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Westen, so helpful in committee hearing this over the years. Need to add anything? Mr. or Madam City Attorney.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. David Michelson of Valerie Flores with the Office of the City Attorney. We know the day is getting long. We'll try to make this as brief as possible. We do have one ongoing concern with respect to the motion that was recently introduced. It's the middle of the motion dealing with personal attention by the merchant. Let me also start off by saying this has been a long time coming. Many parts of the city family and the merchants themselves, they've worked very hard for a year, and frankly goes back fourteen years. You're right, Councilmember Wezar. So it's important that we've got to this place today. It's our job as your lawyers to make sure that this document, this concession agreement, can withstand judicial scrutiny if the city is sued over this concession agreement. This is an unusual document. It may be the only one like it in California, for all we know. It provides for up to forty years in this concession agreement. It does not have a competitive solicitation component, but that is legally sound because the city charter allows for such a scenario. But importantly, the city charter allows for this scenario because of who these merchants are. It recognizes that these merchants represent families who abandoned Alvera Street for generations. And that gets me to my point. The provision that this motion seeks to modify, 4.3, personal attention by merchant, takes out a sentence, and it's a very important sentence from the city attorney's perspective. It's the sentence that provides by way of example what substantial devotion of time and ongoing personal on-premise attention to the operation of the business means. We wanted to have some objective measure built into this document, so months ago, we had this sentence added that required no less than eighty hours monthly for the merchant to be on-site handling their business. We felt very strongly about this objective criteria, primarily, again, because the charter allows this long-term concession agreement with no competitive solicitation because of who these merchants are. It is critical that they are there. And operationally, your general manager, Robert Andrade, will also explain why it's important that they are there. So removing the sentence causes the city attorney's office pause and some degree of concern. We want to make sure that you know that. It certainly would be our recommendation that that sentence be added back in and not be deleted. Again, it was a sentence that is, and I'll read it to you, an acceptable example of which would be a merchant spending no less than eighty hours each month working on the premises. It provides an objective example for what the city believes is a minimum level of attention by a merchant on the property. Did you want anything, Valerie?
Just a couple things. It is the merchants at Alvera Street that actually make Alvera Street what it is. The merchants rescued Alvera Street from the bulldozers in the nineteen thirties. Some of the same families have been there since then, and the monument would not be the same without them. It would not do service to the monument to have absentee concessionaires on the premises. And so we do want to make sure that it's clear to the merchants and the city department that manages the monument that the merchants need to be present, need to be involved in the traditional ceremonies and events. And that way, we feel we have the best chance of defending this very unusual, very generous concession agreement if we get challenged in court. And that works for the benefit of all the merchants.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't quickly add the congratulations to Councilmember Wezar to getting us to where we are today. He expended tremendous amount of effort and really rolled up his sleeves over quite a period of time to make this happen, so we wanted to acknowledge that from our office.
Mr. Wezar?
Thank you. Colleagues, I know that there's one member here that needs to get some medical attention soon, and so we would lose quorum. And, yeah, it's okay. It's not a, but it's not an emergency, but it needs medical, and we would lose quorum. I do ask that we've gone this far, that we approve the lease with the amendment that I proposed. It is going to go to commission, and they come back to us one final time for approval. I do think that as proposed, the language we had that was proposed and worked with the CLA could satisfy the city attorney's concerns, and that we will come up with something when we come back to council and work on some language there. I wouldn't want this one provision to hold up the lease now. We have another time when we come back to finalize it, and we, between now and then, the commission discussion, we could work on this one provision where the city attorney and us. It's not the first time we disagree on something. Throughout this past year, we have agreed and disagreed on a number of issues. We've gone together and worked it out. I'm sure this one last hurdle that's holding us up, we could work out before it comes back to us.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, that's our final speaker on the matter. Take the vote. Mr. Wezar?
We're approving the item as amended, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
As amended. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
All right, next item, and forthwith on number one. And can I continue number twenty-two to tomorrow? Twenty-two to tomorrow, and forthwith on number one. I understand the quorum is lost. The quorum is lost. We are now with items remaining that will be continued to tomorrow. Charge arms, we've lost the quorum. I'm informed we lost the quorum. That'll conclude the council meeting for today. It's lost? Okay, that's it. Thank you for signing off from City Hall. Have a good afternoon, Los Angeles.